I call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. First order of business 2.02, certification of closed session. Can I have a motion, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Is there a second? During discussion. Ms. Serza?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ownby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. Ms. Serza, could you take the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Ms. Ownby.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
During discussion. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ownby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. 4.01, announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The College of William &amp; Mary Education Department through the Dean's Award for Clinical Partnerships recognizes educators who contribute to the professional preparation of William &amp; Mary students through field-based experiences. Each year, Matthew Waley Elementary School hosts many elementary education and special education students. They also host William &amp; Mary students who are pursuing the ESL endorsement during the summer program. This semester, Matthew Waley Elementary collaborated with William &amp; Mary on a unique project in which pre-service teachers taking a reading methods course spent five classroom sessions observing at Matthew Waley. Congratulations to Matthew Waley Elementary School for earning this prestigious award for their partnership in preparing our future teachers. Jamestown High School was selected for the exhibition, Germany Unwrapped, funded by the Office of Foreign Affairs in collaboration with the Goth Institute in Washington, D.C. Germany Unwrapped is a traveling exhibition packaged in two large flight cases. It provides visitors with information about Germany and the German language in playful and humorous ways. You don't need to know any German to understand the exhibition as the images and object speaks for themselves. The two large display cases are located just outside the Jamestown High School cafeteria, and they will be there until January 5th. They are ready to be explored by students, faculty, and families. For the first time, WJCC counseling programs and New Horizons Regional Education Center partnered to provide 80 middle school students with the opportunity to participate in New Horizons Career Day. On December 7th, students from all three middle schools and their counselors traveled to Woodside Lane campus to learn about eight different programs offered through the Career and Technical Education Center. In addition to rotating through different program presentations led by current students, all eighth grade attendees toured the campus and experienced different classroom settings. The purpose of this event was to broaden middle school student awareness of the various educational programs available to them as they set their career goals and prepare for the future. Those are all of the announcements I have this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any announcements or School Board?
I would just like to comment, Dr. Heron. I think it's very exciting that our eighth grade students had an opportunity to travel to Woodside. I think letting our middle school students know early on about our career and technical options is phenomenal, and hopefully that will increase the number of students who access that, so, kudos.
Thank you. 4.02, school spotlight. Dr. Heron?
Mr. Chair, tonight, we have a very special school spotlight for everyone. Under the direction of Carolyn Morse, the War Hill Honor School Choir will perform a holiday medley for us. Thank you, Mrs. Morse and the school choir. Welcome.
(interviewing voice) Good evening. Thank you so much to the members of the School Board, as we're going to perform fast selections. Let it snow, and I'll be home for Christmas.
(music playing) 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 (music playing)
Thank you. Any comments from Board members?
Phenomenal.
What a way to start a meeting.
I have to say, one of the things I'm most proud of in Williamsburg James City County is our performing arts and the way the school system is able to support and the good work that our kids do. The choir here, I saw Peter and the Starcatcher at Jamestown a couple weeks ago, and it was just an amazing performance. It's truly inspirational what our kids do and how well they do it, so, thank you much.
I have to echo that. I'm really amazed at not just the level of the performances of our students in all of the arts, but I, another area that I just think is phenomenal here are all the orchestras at all the high schools are. I've been out there when they're practicing, and they could be the Virginia Symphony. I mean, they are just phenomenal, so, it's great. And those of you who've brought them along from those very squeaky years when they were little kids, it has certainly paid off.
It's amazing the work that they do to get them to where they are.
Yeah.
The musicals in the spring are just amazing, that you have to kind of pinch yourself for the high school and not Broadway quality.
Absolutely, they really are.
So, thank you. Thank you for that. That was, thank you, Dr. Carroll. Dr. Carroll's not here. I thought he was here. 5.01, board recognitions.
Mr. Chair, we have several student recognitions this evening. Let's begin by recognizing four Lafayette athletes for being named VHSL's All-State Team. Students, as your name is called, please join us at the front to be recognized and remain at the front for a group photograph. First of all, Amara Bland Haines, All-State Cheerleading Team.
(applause) Blaine Jones, All-State Cheerleading Team. (applause) Jacob Smethurst, All-State Golf Team. (applause) Conrad Steck, All-State Cross Country Team. (applause) 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 We also have a number of War Hill student athletes to recognize for their individual accomplishments. Students, please come forward as your name is called and remain for the group photograph of All-State winners. Spencer Conti, All-State Cross Country Team. (applause) (applause) Ryland Hagerty, All-State Cheerleading Team. (applause) Ashton Ote and Chrysanthemus Prezes were both named to the All-State Field Hockey Team. (applause) And we have four War Hill volleyball players were named to the All-State Team. They are Cory Clifton, who was also named All-State Player of the Year. (applause) (applause) And Chloe Wilmouth. (applause) 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 Mr. Chair, we will have more recognitions at the next regular Board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. That brings us to 6.01, citizens' comments. Dr. Beers?
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the Board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration during the presentations. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board may not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation. The Board asks that you respect this time limit. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I'd just like to emphasize, all comments are made to the Chair, and three minutes is a time allotment, so there's a timer at the podium. Mrs. Cook?
Adrienne Carter, please.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Ms. Ownby for attending our forum on Saturday. Thank you for your continued support. My name is Adrienne Carter. I live at 100 Laurin Court, Jamestown District. The WJCC School District is located in the epicenter of the military-industrial complex. It is, as I have stated before, akin to corruption that the people of this county and the school district specifically has failed to recognize the need to employ a junior ROTC program. Such a program would be used as just one of the tools to close this school's district's double-digit Jim Crow achievement gap. WJCC can be described as an affluent community, yet smaller and less affluent school districts in the surrounding areas, York County and Surrey Counties, for example, have identified the value in this program that it provides to different segments of their student population. Excuse me. ROTC, along with redesigning the way we deliver vocational and technical trade education and training, and to our students are two tools we can use to close this decade-old Jim Crow achievement gap. Back in the 80s, when I was a student at Lafayette, then the only high school here in James City County, WJCC provided licensed practical nursing training and various vocational trade programs at the junior high and the high school level locally. What happened? I challenge this Board to move out of your comfort zone and redesign the model for which we deliver and provide technical, vocational, skill education, and training to our students. Explore a more regionalized approach, partnering with Charles City, New Canton, Richmond. How much money do we send to New Horizons each year? And are we getting the bang for our buck? Our school population is growing. We need to provide access to these skills to a growing population. My final statement with regard to the demographics and the lack of transparency of the demographics and volumes of students attending private schools in this school district, on this school district's dime. All of our schools are fully accredited, notwithstanding the double-digit Jim Crow achievement gap, but based on a family's ability to afford litigation, they are awarded these vouchers. How much of our tax dollars are spent on this program? In closing, large checks to cover private schools, double-digit Jim Crow achievement gaps, vocational trade training capped based on regional accommodations? What does "fully accredited" truly mean? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter.
Janet Casanave, please. I hope I got that right.
Janet Casanave from 3404 Waterview Road, Toono. And I have been reading in the paper about an online petition to ask for a resignation. I personally, I know just casually Sandy Young, but I think that the basic principle of the whole procedure is really not American. To ask, to blame, to persecute somebody because their spouse has committed something doesn't seem like a normal way to treat somebody in this great land of America. I just think it's the worst thing that can happen. What did she do? She didn't do anything. And it's not, I mean, I'm sure all of you have had jobs, and your spouse, or your sons, or your daughters, you don't spend 24/7 with them. You're going your own way, you're not glued at the hip, and I just don't feel that a spouse should be persecuted because of something that another spouse did, or even what a child did or anything. It's just not American. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jay Everson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Everson, 103 Branskin Boulevard in the county. You know, if Chuck Young was in a medical facility for, let's say, AIDS, HIV, hepatitis, glaucoma, cirrhosis, there would be eyebrows raised because of how that's transmitted. But you know Sandy would have people supporting her, they'd be covering her, and they would be in her corner. But we all know that that's not what the story is. Chuck Young is, now he's done some bad things, and he'll probably spend the rest of his natural life in a prison or in a mental institution such as Eastern State. Because when everything's all said and done, he suffers from an intractable mental illness, has very low cure rate, healing rate. And I find it amazing that here we are tonight, there's talk about her resigning. And just two blocks from here, in Colony Williamsburg, I was photographed there when I was a kid, my kids have been photographed there. So, stocks, put your hands in your neck. Because back in the 17th and 18th century, it was believed that public shaming would get people on the right track. Problem here is that she didn't do anything. The scope of what happened with her husband, she found out just recently in court. Now, it seems to me that if you, that these calls are setting a new standard, a new set of rules, and the calls are coming from the Vice Chair, the Chair, the Miss Bellis from the Gazette, and it says that your family members, that each of one of you is going to be responsible and accountable for what your family members do? You really want to go down that road? And I just, I just find it astonishing. And fortunately, Sandy is a woman of great faith, and she knows that the Lord will see her through this, and that he will be with her to the end of time. God bless you, Sandy. And you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Everson.
Chris Henderson, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. As a lifelong resident of this area, I've seen my share of outrageous decisions and actions by local boards and committees. I've even appeared before this body to express my frustration, my displeasure, and concern with any number of matters, including the James Blair Middle School. The unprecedented action of this body to request the resignation of one of its members is simply without precedence. Sandy Young is an elected official, unlike two members of this Board, Ms. Hummel and Ms. Cook, who were appointed by City Council. Sandy has committed no crime, she's not been charged with any crime, and certainly hasn't been found guilty of any crime. The fate of Sandy Young rests with the voters of James City County, and specifically the voters of the Berkeley District, and it is my sincere hope that Ms. Young remains on this Board and completes her term. If it is the judgment, if it is judgment that lies at the center of your concerns, I would suggest that each of you, except Dr. Beers, needs to take a hard look in the mirror. We live in America where there is a presumption of innocence, the rule of law, due process, and no guilt by association. This is not some banana republic governed by the hysterical or the morally narcissistic. Based upon your collective actions towards Ms. Young, I would question your judgment and fitness for office. It is clear that those voting to seek Mrs. Young's resignation would benefit from a refresher in civics and perhaps some sensitivity training, so as not to create a hostile work environment amongst the Board. Let's say, for instance, that one of the members of this body was determined to be related to perhaps the COO of Gawker. Would that individual be required to resign her position because of the filth spread by that organization? I think not. Sandy Young has dedicated her life to educating children. She has more experience in that arena than anybody else on this Board. She has successfully raised seven children, mostly on her own, during her 20-year separation from her husband from 1992 to 2012. What? She was separated from her husband? Can't be. Doesn't fit our narrative or the fake news that we submitted to the local press. Did it ever occur to you that Ms. Young might be shocked and sickened by the charges against her husband as we are? I know for a fact that she is. Did it ever occur to you that most pedophiles operate in secret and keep those activities hidden from family and friends? Did it ever occur to you that Mrs. Young could be a victim as well? I can't imagine the courage it must have taken to turn in a loved one, a father, a husband, a grandfather. We should thank Sandy and her family for doing the responsible thing and for giving Mr. Young the help he so desperately needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Barbara Henry, please.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, members of the Board. Barbara Henry, 141 Devon Road. I am here this evening also to voice my request for the School Board to drop any notion of pressuring Mrs. Young to resign. She is a competent member of the Board and a respected member of our community. There is no reason she should resign from her duties on the School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Henry.
Elizabeth Keller, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'm Elizabeth Keller at 100 Barrow, James City County. Sandra Young is a courageous, caring, and compassionate person who deserves our compassionate support as the victim of her husband's thoughtless, immoral, and illegal actions. She certainly does not deserve to be the object of a witch hunt seeking to accuse her of being complicit in her husband's offenses. Mrs. Young will be issuing a statement later this evening revealing several facts about when she knew what. One important fact is that she was separated from her husband for 20 years until 2012. The incidents when her son discovered pictures on his father's computer occurred when he was visiting his father. He never told his mother about them. Mrs. Young has been an actively engaged, productive member of this Board for the last year under extremely stressful and trying circumstances. It is preposterous to assert that she is no longer capable of serving with honor and distinction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Keller.
Tim Mark, please.
I'm Tim Mark, 3923 Thorngate Drive, James City County resident. I'm here for Ms. Sandra Young as well, for her support, and I think it's horrific what was coming in the papers, and Ms. Ownby, what you-
Please direct your comments to the Chair.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But it was horrific that you came out very quickly, and you guys are a team, and you cannot offer judgment, and you guys didn't even, you did not meet as a team before, and you were already offering comments and judgments, and a resignation. And that is horrific, and you should all look in the mirror, and you should drop any charges. Ms. Sandra Young, thank you for your years of service, and you know what? You're welcome in my house anytime. I have two children in this county, and this woman is what we need in this county, and we all owe her a debt of gratitude, and thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Dorothea Matthews, please. Dorothea Matthews, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dorothy E. Matthews, 303 Parr, James City County. I rise to speak in support of Sandra Young, a caring, compassionate, highly competent woman of excellent character. Sandy voluntarily appeared before the federal grand jury investigating her husband, waiving her constitutional First Amendment right and protection against self-incrimination, doing so without a lawyer. As a lawyer myself, I know how serious it is to voluntarily testify before a grand jury. It takes courage and the knowledge that you have nothing to hide. Sandy is not in any legal jeopardy. Rather, she is a victim of her husband's behavior, and worse, the witch hunt being led by those who claim to support victims but who clearly do not practice what they preach. It is a sad irony that the woman who has devoted a good part of her first year on the board to trying to combat bullying in the schools is herself being bullied. The claims that Sandy cannot manage her private life and the demands of the school board are ludicrous and hypocritical. If that is true, then every member of the board with a full-time job, minor children, or other family issues should stand up right now and resign. In closing, I quote from the December 3 Virginia Gazette editorial, quote, "Sandy Young so far has been an engaged and enthusiastic member of the school board, and that's just what the community needs to get through the next few years," unquote. I could not agree more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Roseanne Redden, please.
Roseanne Redden, 4700 Presidents' Court. I'm here to express my support for school board member Sandy Young. It is hard to believe that a story on the front page of the Virginia Gazette reporting a criminal investigation has turned into a vendetta against someone who has not been charged with any crime. Personally, this feels to me like a legal issue of defamation of character. As I prepared comments about the accusations, turmoil, and stresses Sandy has been forced to endure, a few words came to the forefront: unwarranted, disgraceful, intimidating, biased, unproductive, enraging, hateful, and political. It seems evident that the local media, the Virginia Gazette, is acting like both the judge and jury by printing three consecutive front-page articles about a certain criminal investigation. And the school board seems to be going along with their unseemly conduct. The first front-page article on November 30 addressed the criminal investigation and mentioned that Sandy was the wife of the accused. She was not indicated as part of the crime. The second front-page article began to address Sandra, it gave only a little more about the criminal investigation. It had a few quotes from Chairman Kelly. One, "The board had received several calls or emails asking Sandra to step down. What charges were brought against her, I ask? Why were the names of these several people, were it 2, 5, 10, 50? Shouldn't they have to name themselves? Shouldn't the victim of accusations be given the right to meet the accusers? Meet them. Maybe you should make them appear here." Chairman Kelly was quoted, "I'm sure she'll do what's in the best interest of her family and the school board." Voila, there was a third front-page story, and this criminal investigation story was mentioned only, an iota. The story was now turned into a personal witch hunt against Sandra Young, and contained a headline saying, "Some Board Members Call For Her Resignation." No further justification for this or information was even given. No one has the legal right to attack Sandy when she has not committed or been charged with any crime. The Gazette has its own agenda and published it. That reminds me of another horrendous media mistruth called "Hands Up, Don't Shoot." Very troubling that there are many citizens who believe everything they read in the media. Sandra is a duly-elected official, a member of this board. She was elected for her qualifications as an educator and well-informed citizen. I have come to the conclusion that Sandra is not a member of the board who should step down. I would ask for anyone in the audience who is here to support Sandra Young to please stand at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Redden.
Thank you.
Sandy, this is-
Thank you. Thank you.
Paula Sumrall, please.
I'm Paula Sumrall, 1720 Waverly Lane, Lenexa, the Powhatan School District, and a potential candidate for the school board. Sandy Young is my good friend, and I support her 100%. I learned about the confiscation of her husband's computer and other devices months ago, right after it happened, and certainly well before the rest of you knew about it. Despite being terribly upset at the potential allegations against her husband and fearful of the eventual outcome, she managed, and I don't know how, to show grace and professionalism in the execution of her duties on the school board, and continued to do so even after innuendo and gossip and downright bullying by fellow members on the board ensued when the news was made public. I'm a military spouse. My husband is a retired Army general, and he regrets that he cannot be here tonight, and that's the reason I'm standing in front of you, because I have a little thought on leadership. Anybody here tonight who has served this country in uniform or is a military spouse knows that one of the first signs of leadership, one of the first things you do, know your team and support their welfare. And I want to take the time to thank you, Dr. Beers, and I know you don't know who on earth I am, but I want to thank you, my husband wants to thank you, for your calm head in this time of adversity, for your patience in dealing with other board members, for setting a good example, and most of all, for having a backbone and the willingness to stand up and take action and wait for all the facts to be gathered. You have kudos from us for your leadership, and I appreciate your kindness to my friend. You obviously know your team and look out for their welfare, and sir, I certainly hope and pray that you will become the leader of this board as we search for a new superintendent. The rest of you have been shameful.
Thank you, Ms. Sumrall.
Avery Walters, please.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'd like to, sorry, I'd like to recognize that there's an issue in the school system. The students and teachers and staff of the schools are all deprived of sleep, or at least for the most part, and I'd like to request a motion for a poll among the students, teachers, and staff of the schools regarding start times. All right, let's begin with the paper. "Common Sense to Improve Student Achievement That Too Few Have Implemented: Let Teens Sleep More, Start School Later." It's in the best interest of students, teachers, administrators, and parents that this problem be addressed. To function at their most alert levels and to maintain the healthiest possible lifestyles, adolescents need more sleep, and early start times at schools interfere with their natural circadian rhythms, making it almost impossible for them to get the rest they need. These are the words of the U.S. Education Secretary, Arn Duncan. Circadian rhythms tell us that teenagers should be asleep from about 11:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. However, this is cut short by a 7:20 start of instruction in the high schools. This, for us, waking up at, you know, 5:00 or 6:00 a.m. is like an adult waking up at 4:00 a.m. This says we have to go to bed at 8:00 p.m., but with obstacles for me, such as band concerts and lacrosse practices that could cut into the 9:00 p.m., 10:00 p.m. hours, it's difficult to stay awake in first block at schools and keep my health up. I'd like to say that we have a dilemma, and that's that common sense and an overwhelming amount of research tell us that we should start school later in the high schools, but this is cut down by complications and intimidation of the expenses of change. I'd like to say that I've talked with students and teachers and staff, and the overwhelming response from all of them was that a later start time would be beneficial to us, and well, sorry, out of time. Thank you very much, and sorry, thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing, and I'll try my best to reach out to all of you to follow up. I've contacted Dr. Beers, no response yet.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
I look to continue the conversation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. John Whitley.
After that rendering, I want to nap. I'm John Whitley, 110 Governor Berkeley Road. I'm here to speak to an issue that faces us every single day, too, really. It's the equal employment outcomes and practices of our school system. It's the equal educational outcomes and practices of our school systems. We have some children who, a population that is not abandoned but missed, not looked at with the love and care and compassion that they need to be. I also think that within our approach to how we recruit, retain teachers, we need to really look at what you had before you as a board in 2014, a teacher recruitment plan. I know we are trying to reach out more to HBCUs. Oh, by the way, that's historically black colleges and universities. There's a plan presented to the board in 2013 that gave a pretty clear direction of how to go about utilizing a Citizen Affirmative Action Advisory Committee. As you know well, some of you, historically otherwise, that committee was abandoned along with other advisory committees. Got a lot of work to do, friends. We stand with you in your decision-making and know that you're compliant as you see it with law. I only wish that those 12 or 13 people who spoke on behalf of a personal issue would motivate themselves to come stand up and be visible and vocal, to speak on behalf of equal educational opportunities and equal employment opportunities. And I'm speaking about black folk being employed in our school system. I'm talking about ethnic minorities being employed in our school system. We've got, we gotta do better, absolutely. I commend you, Chairperson Kelly, for your determination, your decision-making. I think that the process you engage in and the board engages in are appropriate as you're guided by law. I'm especially appreciative of the two appointed members of the city of Williamsburg. To me, you hold equal status. I only wish it were such that your voting power could be increased from one vote to 2.5 so that you have five with the rest of them. Thank you very much. Keep doing what you do. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Dr. Whitley. That's the end of our cards. So moving on to 7.01, Community Engagement Report from BWP Associates, Dr. Kastner and Dr. Harris.
Fortunately, I'm starting to report, and I'd like to tell the board members and members of this community how much we enjoyed our time learning more about this public school system. It was very impressive, and the outreach and the courtesy that we were afforded, we very much appreciate. Tonight's purpose is to share what we found out in the hours that we spent in two full days and a few evenings in meeting with the board members. This paper trail is not something that just is going to end when we do this report. The board members have not had much chance to have a chance to review this because we just finished it earlier today. But what we're going to do is we're going to go through a brief PowerPoint. What we're going to also do is share with you some preliminary data on surveys that about 200 people in this community have participated, and we know that that number's going to increase. Board members also have a 10-page report that is an annotated summary using the language that we received, not annotated, from the community during the time that we were here, and also from the data sources that we're presenting you. We have come up with a draft leadership profile that probably after this evening, the board needs to reach a consensus to see if it reflects what you view as what should happen for when we're looking at the next superintendent, and will aid in how we would be screening candidates to meet the profile for your consideration of who you would choose to interview. If I could start first, what's the purpose of community engagement? It's to identify the perceived strengths and challenges of the public school system. So here you are, period, five years ago, this might have gone on, but it gives a snapshot that validates, in many cases, what an excellent system you have, but also addresses certain challenges. It's the type of thing when you're hearing about these strengths, it's the type of thing the HR department or future candidates are going to appreciate. It's also to identify and describe desired qualities and characteristics that the next superintendent should possess and demonstrate. And at the same time, it's to bring the community together, along with people internally and externally, to how the search process is going to work and how the board, in its way, is making a very transparent attempt to be inclusive for us to hear all of the information that will help guide you in your decisions. When we go through and we actually look at the legwork, the time we spent in the system was a qualitative time, talking with people, in which we had over 40 interviews, and we talked with approximately 149 people. We've also then had the quantitative data that I'm going to go through now, and Wayne is going to go through the results of the qualitative data from the interviews that we had. From the preliminary results, when you look at three significant strengths of the school system, it's no surprise that when you have 200 people, you look at 64, if you do the math, you're talking over 120 people, that's a significant pattern. Talk about the excellent teachers and staff. One of the things was so noted, one of your students that we met made a comment, "We have great teachers. They're not just in here for the paycheck," and he was very appreciative of that, and hearing it from the kids is important. When you talk about your good school facilities, whether it's the building of your middle school or the schools you already have, you're down to about a third, and when you look at the entire survey board members, you'll see that there's a number of other categories that people weigh in, but what we're trying to do is identify the most significant ones in the top three. It's no surprise, the supportive community, 32%, we're talking about a high-profile community that supports education and has a high value. And the important skills you'd like to see in a superintendent? Leadership skills. You're looking for a leader. You're not looking for someone in the status quo. You're looking at someone- You're looking at someone that will move the system on from the strengths it already has. You're then looking at communication skills. You'll notice that communication skills and interpersonal skills rank very highly in comparison to your other categories. What it suggests is this community would value a people person, someone that can be engaging and be a visible part of your community. When you look at other important characteristics you'd like to see, at the very top, integrity, commitment to the community, you're not looking for someone that coming here to build a career and move on, you're looking for someone that's going to have staying power. You're also looking at trying to go beyond the trend of superintendent change every five years or so. You're looking for a greater continuity from the people we talk to. You're also looking for a team builder. A team builder entirely not only as a superintendent with a school board, but also a superintendent with the staff, public, and the students. When you're looking for experience desired, at the very top, now, when we had these categories, it's either strongly agree or agree and we combine them, but when you see that, you're looking for experience in instruction and a classroom teacher at the very top. You're not looking for a non educator. You're also looking for experience in strategic planning and, and this happened in, as we met with a very diverse group of people, you have it stated here that experience in a multicultural environment because there's a complexity to this system as you find and know on the many different communities you have and also the interest in all students from each of these communities being successful. And that could be the achievement gap, but also you're going to find it has a lot to do also with career pathways, not just be oriented towards college. The three most important issues or concerns in the next five years, educational options and programs. That coming at the top will have more annotative information when you read your report to show it's meeting the needs of all groups of students. You're talking about funding. Funding not only for your operational program, but also your capital program and also trying to keep competitive salaries to attract teachers and staff and also have them be retained and also to compete to attract diverse candidates. And you're dealing with the issue of growth and the strain it brings. But in dealing with the issue of growth, you're also talking of the added complexity it's bringing to the students. What I'd like to do now is to turn this over to Dr. Harris and he's going to go over the qualitative part from the interviews.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Herron, it's my pleasure to be before you to report to you the results from the community engagement discussions, interviews, and forums that we held on November twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. You will note that there is congruence between the responses on the online survey and what we heard from the one hundred and forty-nine individuals who spoke with us during the two and a half days that we were here. Let me first refer you to pages five, six, and seven because the responses under strengths are elaborated on in the statements that we heard. So if you go to page five of the long report, the community engagement report, you will see a section that refers to strengths. You will find some detail there. I will not walk you through all of that detail, but in essence, there are four broad categories of detail that appear there. The first broad category that corresponds to what you've already heard, we heard repeatedly that one of the strengths is the excellent, caring, and dedicated staff. They were referring to teachers as well as other members of the school division who support those who are in the classroom. The second category of strength has to do with the size of the community, its location, and the quality of life that's here as well as a supportive community. I see the board members looking a little puzzled. Did I give you the wrong page numbers? Do you have a different document than I have?
It's this report, right?
Yes, that's the report I'm referring to.
And that's in the board docs as well?
Okay. You can follow along. I can go back and answer any questions that you might have. There's also high expectations for the continuation of strong schools. We heard that in a variety of statements. You should be proud that you are a world-class school district. You've been fully accredited, all of your schools for the past ten years. You have a number of rigorous programs. There's an expectation that students will be prepared for success in their careers, whether they go on to college or university or not. And then the other broad category was the partnerships that you have with William and Marion and your community college as well as some opportunities for leveraging additional resources from those colleges and universities that are in close proximity to you. We heard about the possibility at Hampton University as one example. There are some additional comments on the page under strengths and they further help define what we have on this particular slide. If you go to the bottom of page five and the entire page six, you will see that there are a list of challenges in broad categories with explanation. I will simply refer to the first four, four broad categories. The first challenge has to do with educational options. It was noted as we talked with individuals that there are some students whose options are limited because they come with some deficits or they prefer to prepare themselves for going straight into the work well or into the military. And so there are options that need to be expanded for students in order to meet all students' needs. You have a growing population, different population, diverse population, and there are options that need to be offered for those students as well. Second category, which is really part of the challenges that most school districts face this year and that has to do with funding. There's competition for limited funds. You have two agencies, both a city government and a county government that's responsible for helping to fund the programs within the schools. So there's competition there. There's competition for funds to the operating budget as well as to your capital budget. And you also have this challenge around funding that has to do with redistricting. You're building a new, made a decision about a new middle school and so there is this competition. That will be a challenge for you as a board and certainly for your next superintendent. Category three has to do with the transitioning school board. You have a board with four relatively new members who've only been on the board now for a year. You have board members who will be coming up for reelection or appointment and you have a new superintendent who will be coming on board. So the transitioning that is going on presents a significant challenge in order that you can operate as a leadership team of eight rather than as individual body collective of seven versus one, your new superintendent. And then finally, you've experienced growth. That is a challenge for you. You anticipate based on your projections that you will continue to have an increase in the number of students over the next several years and that they will be a diverse group of students, which will place some burden and tension both on expanding programs as well as funding. So these are the broad categories of strengths and challenges. I would remind you that it's this information along with what I will present in the next slide that will help define the broad categories you'll find in the leadership profile, which we will talk about in just a moment. We ask everyone we met with to identify the qualities, characteristics, attributes, and experiences that Kevin and I should look for in candidates as we are screening the pool who apply in order that we can present to you those candidates that are the best, match, and fit. And here is what we were told. Again, the detail is you will find on page seven, but we've highlighted a number of broad categories here. First and foremost, we were told that you are looking for an instructional leader who will have been able to demonstrate success in a high-profile district and who will come with a track record of meeting the needs of students in similar settings to this school division. You want a collaborative leader, someone who will seek, listen to, and use the advice from others, someone who will be an excellent communicator. We heard over and over again that your next superintendent must be a communicator who will listen emphatically to understand what is being said before they try to be understood, someone who will support programs that address all students' talents, needs, and interests. We should be looking for an approachable, visible, and personable leader who will work with staff and community to continue to move the school division forward, take it to the next level. We had one person say, take us from where we are, take us to greater than just being great. A leader who will strategically make the best use of available resources and will build relationships with the school board and county and city officials. A superintendent who will be student-centered, who will be transparent, who will communicate, who will do that with unvarnished, unvarnished integrity, someone who can communicate effectively with all individuals within this community and who will consistently advocate for and support teachers and staff. And finally, an energetic and courageous leader who will confront disparities and advocate for all students. We took the information from challenges, strengths, and then what are the attributes that we would look for? And we created four descriptors that you will see in the leadership profile. The first descriptor is an instructional leader. I've given you some detail about that. The second category is a collaborative manager. The third category, an effective communicator. And last, personal qualities. And so what we've done is to draft a leadership profile, which you have a copy of. It is draft, you have to approve it. So if you will pull up a copy of the leadership profile.
That's in our board docs.
That's in your board docs.
Let me make a point. The leadership profile, the language in the profile is almost verbatim of what we've already presented. So that whole alignment, it seems that to do it justice, you're going to have to have the opportunity, which you haven't had, to look through the report, look at the survey, look at the documentation, but we will tell you it's going to lead to these categories. And this is, these are just organizational. The purpose here tonight is not to have you get into wordsmanship over this because you haven't had sufficient time, but we would like you to find some mechanism that you could get board agreement, maybe have someone take all the information from board members and consolidate it and come up with to see if we've got it right or if you want to make, and we encourage you to make edits so you own this because this is what we're going to use to vet the candidates. I would say we would like to have this back by at least the first week in January after you come back. We're not putting a timeline on it, but we also think, because we've already explained all this, what you're going to see in the bullets is pretty much what we've already shared with you.
And this document is important because as candidates are making a final decision to apply, they will look for specifics to determine if their experiences are, say that they are a good match and then therefore they will fill out the application. So it gives further direction and more depth as they are preparing.
So is the first week of January too late? Because applications are due.
The twenty-fourth of February is the cutoff.
We're tight. I just know this is a busy week. If you can get it done this week, it'd be great.
No, it's March. Your cutoff date is in March.
February.
No.
It's February seventh.
January is the.
February seventh, so we have to do it. January twenty-third.
Going to the next slide, let's hit that right now. Can you go to the next slide, Wayne? When you're looking at your next step, you're getting your online survey results and you're talking about January eighteen. By us talking about having it that first week in January, or if you can get it before, any candidate we're going to vet, we're going to be using that profile. It will be up on our website also. So, Mr. Kelly, if you could hit the end of this week, I think that would be helpful if you could.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can hit the end of this week, but certainly I think what we would shoot for would be the middle of next week.
Let me offer a suggestion. And this has worked with the other boards we've worked with. If one member of the board is designated to receive any suggestions from the rest of the board and let that one individual, at the most two, make any revisions, it will go faster because seven people will not be able to do this and do it efficiently. So that would be a suggestion.
Committee is not going to work. Well, I think board members have just got it tonight, so I would like to, I'd like to give through the weekend for board members to review and comment on it. If comments could be sent to me by Sunday night? Does that work for everybody? I can collate it and get it back to you, I would shoot for Wednesday night?
As long as we have it back and it's your final profile, we'll get it posted.
I think you would, I think it's great, Sunday night, all comments go to you, but then you need to somehow get them back to us, maybe, I don't know how quickly you can turn it around so that we can make sure that it's something we all agree to. Does that make sense to everyone?
Sure. That's what I was going to say. I want to make another point that once we have this public document, we would hope that it could be available where people in your community could see if we got it right. We also want to know if we got, if for some reason we've missed something and you board members are experts in your community, then you should take and make adjustments as you see fit. Now, there's a difference between coming in and visiting and all of a sudden knowing the depth of you as you live here. So that's the type of a way that we can work back and forth. But you're the experts on this. I think we've done a pretty good job capturing it, but it shouldn't just stop there.
So you want to continue?
Well, what I'd like to tell you, and you're right, we have a pretty ambitious deadline and we already have over a dozen applicants. We think someone might be waiting for over winter break because it takes a while to do all that and we're going to keep working towards vetting. We're starting to narrow even down already, but you see the application deadline is January eighteenth and we will be sending, we will be meeting with you to give you a slate of candidates on January twenty-third. And because you're backward mapping by trying to introduce a new superintendent and Jim, I don't know if it was February fifteenth, but I knew it was close to that date, that you have to get the interviews and you've got to get the negotiations all done. So during a time when also board members are working on a budget, it's probably not ideal, but you are obligated of reaching that deadline and we think we can make it work. And I would say that one of the things that's working for you and this community is you have an excellent school system. It's a desirable place for people to want to.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I appreciate the. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I appreciate the applications probably waiting for the break, however, they're also probably waiting for this leadership profile to get out.
That, we should see an uptick in applications once that's on there.
Right, so if we, if we look at moving that timeline so we can get it to you on the Wednesday, so if I get comments from board members on Friday, collate them through the weekend, send them out to the board members, then, then get it to you Wednesday, which I guess is the 21st?
We'll have it up on our site the next day.
So when we get it, it'll go up?
Does that work for board members? For to get comments to me by Friday, Friday, I didn't say C, but the end of Friday? Does that work?
If we could, could we get it in Word? Please?
Oh, yes, yes. Rather than a PDF, a Word document.
Janet maybe could help with that.
We've got software.
By the way, we've been very fortunate, Janet has been very supportive for this whole process. She's had to deal with all the details, and I very much appreciate her efforts.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important that we get it out before shutdown.
If you get it to us, we'll have it up within a day after we get it.
Just this.
Mr. Chairman, are there other comments or questions, things that you would like for us to address?
Board members? Go ahead.
I would just like to thank you for going over and above, I know you collected a little extra community input after you're, after you left town, so I appreciate that. Took that seriously, and it's important work.
Any other comments from board members? No, I appreciate the good work that you guys have done, the flexibility to meet with the community, meet with the different members of our community, different groups, I think that's extraordinary. I, several members attended all the community forum, open community forums that you had, and you've got a great breadth and even depth of comments there. So I appreciate, I appreciate your good work, and we'll read the leadership profile and get that back to you as soon as we can so we can get that out there.
Thank you.
Anything else, board members, before we move on?
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you as well, but we'll be in touch before then, won't we? Step Texas 7.02 Audit Report for the Year Ended June 30th, 2016, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Annually, we bring an audit report to you of the previous year's finances, and Ms. Berta is here to introduce this item this evening. Thank you, Ms. Berta.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. Annually, we have to go through an audit with Dixon Hughes Goodman, and I'm pleased to have with us tonight Ms. Leslie Roberts, who is a partner with Dixon Hughes Goodman. She is here to introduce our auditor and to give you our audit report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016.
Good evening. I'm just going to kind of go over the highlights, and then Rob's going to get into a little bit of the details. But basically, the audit went very well. Everybody was prepared for us, and they worked with us, and they were attentive throughout the time that we were scheduled to be here. We actually had a much better audit this year than we've had in prior years because we did a lot of pre-planning and meeting. We got together and we actually changed the schedule of when we do the audit and kind of worked with each other really collaboratively, and it just went very smoothly. Pleased to report that everybody, that we had a good audit. There's two reports within the audit, Rob's going to go into some detail, but basically, you had an unmodified opinion, which means we were able to come in here as a third party, look at your records, and opine on them, that they present fairly not only the operation but the position at the end of the year. And there's also another report that we present, part of your financial package, and it's a report on internal control over financial reporting. And again, another clean report. We didn't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report to you. There's another required correspondence that Rob will go into, and that was again a clean report, most of it spoiler play, but he's going to just dive into a little bit more detail. But overall, the audit went well, in fact, much better than in the past because we did a lot of collaborating upfront. So they should be commended for the job they've done. And Rob's going to go detail. Rob Oden is the manager on your engagement, has been the manager for several years.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be here again with you this year to talk through the results of the audit, not only of the school's comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFR, but also the financial statements of the activity funds. So, you know, as I've, as I've mentioned before, you know, this, and I see some fresh faces up here as well, I'm not going to go through in extreme detail on this 130-page document, but I do want to give you a brief roadmap to where if you're going to spend any time with this, this document, it'll point you into the right direction. So with this CAFR, this comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2016, there's four major areas. The first is the introductory section, and in that, that includes the letter of transmittal, which is a letter from the management of the school board to you, the school board members. Also, next section that would qualify as a major section would be the management discussion and analysis, the MDNA. This is on pages 13 through 22. If you're going to spend any time with these financial statements, I would suggest starting with the MDNA. It's an executive summary of the financial position and results of operations of the schools for fiscal year 16. Then you get into the, kind of the nuts and bolts of the financial statements, the government-wide financial statements, the fund financial statements, and the footnotes to those financial statements. That's on pages 26 through 79. This is where you're going to get in to see the detailed assets and liabilities, revenue and expenses of each of the major funds of the school board. The last major section is the statistical section, pages 83 through 128. This is, you know, roughly 40 pages or so of historical financial data, presenting 10 years' worth of data, or you can look at various trends of financial positions of the school, revenue and expenditure levels, expenditures per pupil, economic information of the Williamsburg, City of Williamsburg and James City County. Those are the four major sections. I'd also like to point out too, on pages nine and 10 of this CAFR, that again, this year, the school board has received the certificate of excellence in financial reporting from not only the GFOA, but also the Association of School Business Officials. And we believe that after the audit and review of the 2016 CAFR, which I'm here discussing with you tonight, it will also receive this same certificate of excellence. Now, Leslie briefly mentioned the results of the audit reports, but I'd kind of like to go a little bit more in detail with those. The first audit report in the financial statements is on page 11 through 22, or 11 and 12. And on page 11, the independent auditor's report, you can see the bullet points in bold, italicized, kind of the paragraph headings. They go through, and they talk about management's responsibility during the audit process, the auditor's responsibility during the audit process, and then kind of what you guys really care about, the opinion paragraph at the bottom of page 11. And there's where, as Leslie mentioned, you are receiving an unmodified opinion on these financial statements, the highest level of assurance the CPA can give on a set of financial statements. The next page, page 12 of that audit report, the first few paragraphs titled Required Supplementary Information and Other Information, goes through a little bit further detail about what sections of this CAFR our audit report extends to in our opinion coverage. Because while we are auditing and giving our opinion on the basic financial statements and the footnotes and a few additional schedules, we're not giving an opinion on the management discussion and analysis introductory section or the statistical section, although we did read those areas and make sure they agree back to the basic financial statements that we did audit. So that kind of gives you a little more detail about where the audit opinion covers. The last paragraph, Other Reporting Requirements by Government Auditing Standards, references back to the second audit report within this CAFR, which is in the very back section of the compliance section, pages 129 and 130. And that's where, under government auditing standards, we're required to not only review the internal controls around financial reporting of the school board, but also look at their compliance with laws and regulations where if there was a violation, could have a material impact on these financial statements. Pleased to report again, there was no internal control deficiencies that raised the level of material weakness that we're required to communicate with you, as well as there's no compliance issues or findings that are required to be reported to you. The only, you know, last year, I talked to you about a new Government Accounting Standards Board pronouncement that had significant changes in these financial statements. And it took a lot of significant work to implement GASB 68 for the pension liability that was required to be booked with regard to the Virginia retirement system for your professional and non-professional employees. This year, there are no new accounting pronouncements or new GASBs that had any significant effect on these financial statements. But there is one additional footnote that I wanted to draw to your attention. It's footnote number 11 on the bottom of page 69. The last paragraph, it talks about the newly formed Williamsburg-James City County Educational Foundation, and how that organization is related to the Williamsburg-James City County School Board and the activity the two entities had with each other during, during the fiscal year. Now, there's also a management letter, a letter required, a required communication to those charged with governance, you, the school board. I believe that's also in your board docs. And this letter, as Leslie mentioned, has some boilerplate language that walks through and talks about what the major estimates are in these financial statements. These estimates have not changed from previous years. They're with regard to the actuarial assumptions for not only the other post-employment benefit liability, but also the pension liability. There's also estimates with regard to depreciation and the useful lives of assets. This letter would also go into discussing the fact that there are no new accounting principles or policies that were adopted this year, as well as any significant difficulties we had during the audit process, which I'm pleased to report there were none. Now, we also audited the activity funds, the combined statements of cash receipts and disbursements.
I was going to go through with an asking question at the end.
And as part of that audit, we go out to each of the 15 schools, and we use audit sampling techniques to sample the cash receipts and disbursements at the activity funds. And the culmination of that audit is, again, we've issued a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, that the combined statement of cash receipts and disbursements of all 15 schools is materially correct in accordance with the cash basis of accounting.
What, what pages are those listed under?
So that's a separate document?
It's a separate document.
It's in, within board docs. It's labeled Combined Statement of Cash Receipts and Disbursements.
Content.
The audit report on that document is on pages one and two, and again, an unmodified opinion, so again, the highest level of assurance the CPA can give on a set of financial statements. We also issued a management letter with regard to that audit as well, and again, this year, reporting to you, there is a significant deficiency in internal controls with regard to segregation of duties. Now, this is commonplace, we've had, we've reported this every year because it's not economically feasible for you to have multiple bookkeepers within each school, to have one person take the money to the bank, another person record the transaction in the school system, it's just not possible. But in this case, the principal is serving as a, as a, as a go-between or a compensating control in that area so that even though there is some segregation of duty issues because the bookkeeper has to do everything, the principal is serving as a review and approval process to review what the bookkeeper does and approve all the cash disbursements. There are also detailed findings within the following pages of that document that kind of walk through the specific findings per school. The only pervasive issue is just the timing of when a teacher will turn in the funds to the bookkeeper, it's supposed to be deposited daily, and every once in a while, you get the teacher holding funds overnight and giving the funds to the bookkeeper the next day. That's pretty common from the last, last 10 years of auditing with you guys. You guys do a great job within the activity funds, and the comments I find here at James City County, Williamsburg, James City County School Board are significantly less than many other school systems that we work with, so you're to be commended for that. Again, it was a pleasure to work through the audit this year with your accounting department, Mrs. Christine Berta, and Renee Ewing and Beth Carpenter and their staff do an excellent job of preparing for us, and do an excellent job of preparing these financial statements for us to audit. If there's any questions, I would be happy to address them now.
Board member questions? Go ahead.
Well, I'm glad to hear that there weren't compliance issues. I do have kind of a picky question with regard to the major initiatives on page five. I was, it was just curious to me that we highlighted one particular subgroup, and I was wondering why we didn't note achievement gap for all of our subgroups, why one subgroup was noted? That might be something that Ms. Berta would answer.
That's probably something Ms. Berta would have to address.
This is a document that we prepare every year, and we do update those sections. We certainly can review that again and expand upon that. There are other documents in the division that highlight those, so we pull out pieces to include and incorporate for our submission of that document and the publication of our financials. But if that's the desire of the board to expand that, we certainly can work with our school performance department to expand that.
It just seemed odd because we note that our initiative is to ensure that we're educating all children, and so that's just, it looked, it seemed odd to me that we're only noting one particular subgroup.
We can look at that, sure.
Thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm looking back at page 69, that last paragraph about the Education Foundation.
Yes, sir.
At that sentence, I guess that's the second long sentence, "Foundation is a nonprofit organization established to receive private donations, contributions to be used for the benefit of the students of WJCCPS, and is jointly governed by the citizens of James City County, citizens of the city of Williamsburg, WJCC School Board." Explain that?
So there are various...
Yeah.
So there are various...
Because I, my, go ahead, and then I'll tell you what my assumption was.
Okay. There's various board members that are nominated or voted to participate on that governing board, and those are coming from those three bodies, City of Williamsburg, James City County, and the school board. So those three bodies nominate officials to serve on that board, and therefore, that organization is jointly governed by the three city, county, and school board.
Okay, so it's not an independent organization at all?
It is an independent organization.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm trying to understand the word govern.
It is jointly governed by those three bodies who have nominated people to that board. It is not a, it's not a component unit or a joint venture of the school board, it is not legally connected to the school board, it is independent, but the school board does have votes on that board.
So if we make a suggestion, the foundation can ignore it?
They can, yes.
I, to that point, I am the Education Foundation representative on the board. I'm not sure if we are handling that appointment the same way that we're handling other committees and boards, and I just didn't, I'm throwing it out as a question because...
Yeah, the, the board of directors of the foundation is made up of citizens from the city, the county, and a member of the school board. So we do not appoint a member to the Education Foundation. The Education Foundation elects a member of the school board, so they, they invite a member of this, a specific member of the school board to attend. The school board does not appoint somebody to that, to that board of directors.
So, so, and I know it's sort of getting off the topic, but it is a work session and we sort of talk about stuff. My, so the question I have related to that, the foundation can actually go on and operate on its own, decide they want to do something for the school, or decide, which would be kind of a, instead of coming to the board first, they just operate independently and then do something?
At our next meeting, the foundation board will come... At our next meeting, the Foundation Board will come to us with their gift, and we can choose not to accept it if we don't like...
No, I'm not talking about the gift. I'm talking about anything they might, you know, want to do. I know, for example, that they scheduled a meeting without contacting the board about that, and it was, I think it was a pretty significant meeting, or that they, no, I'm sorry. They scheduled a meeting and it happened to be at the same time as the school board meeting, and it was a fundraising effort. And I would have thought it would be really important to have school board members there. That's just an example.
Right.
Checking, you know, just sort of, you want to do this? Does it fit into your calendar? That's what I, that's a minor sort of thing, but I'm just, I'm just curious about how it operates. And so I was intrigued by the word govern.
Mm-hmm. I understand.
I'm not sure what it meant. Okay. Still not sure, but I understand. I understand.
Ms. Coop?
I have yet to read this, and so I plan to do that, and I'm sure I'll have questions. Dr. Heron and Ms. Berta know that, so thank you. But just with regard to the Foundation, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's not, it's the school board, but also the superintendent sits on that board as well?
That's correct.
Yeah, so just in terms of the accuracy of that, I think there's two things. I think the relevant thing to the school division in terms of an audit and our financial position is that if something happens to the Foundation, it's in their governing documents that any assets they have roll into our possession. So I think in terms of, even though we may not be able to quantify that at a future date, if that organization goes away, its assets become ours, if I'm correct. So that, I think that's relevant and should be noted.
I'll have to look back through the organizational documents of the organization, but these are your footnotes, and if you want to tweak the wording of this footnote, as long as it's materially correct within general accepted accounting principles, we're going to be okay with the wording of that footnote.
Any other comments from board members?
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Berta and her staff for all the hard work, and it's really nice to sit here and hear all of the basic accolades from our CPA auditors. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Berta, and thank you, sir. You know, the minor inconsistencies at the school sites with all the moving parts that are there, that's, that's a job well done by our school bookkeepers and Mrs. Berta giving them guidance as to how they should perform. So I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
That takes us to 7.03, design process update on the Lafayette High School Auxiliary Gym. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're going to have an update on progress in the auxiliary gym project, and Mr. Snipes is going to introduce our guest this evening. Our information this evening will include the value engineering on the gym as well. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. In July of 2016, the board awarded the design of the Lafayette High School Auxiliary Gym to HBA, which stands for Hardgrove-Brockwell Associates. Since that time, we have conducted a review of VE, value engineering, and Mr. Jack Hastings from HBA is here tonight to bring you up to date on that design. We are in the design development phase of this, of this, of the project. The next couple of phases will include a construction document phase, a bid award phase, and then the project closeout. So without further ado, Mr. Hastings from HBA.
My name is Jack Hastings, and I'm an architect working on the Gymnasium Edition project. Currently, the project is approximately 50% through design, and we're still on schedule. Everything's moving along as it should in accordance with our schedule. The latest activity that we've done since I was here last relates to a value engineering process, and I was just wondering if you all have any questions at all about what that process entails? So if not, the process actually resulted...
I guess, what were some of the, what were some of the areas that were identified? Just, I'm just curious to see.
Sure.
And which ones you, you know, thought were...
Are you asking in regards to the criteria for the value engineering? Or are you asking what the process included when it started? What is your specific question in regards to?
So...
Can I help?
When, yeah, but I know, I'm not quite...
I think, I think what you're asking us for is what items were identified as being value engineered? Which ones did you accept? Which ones did you not?
Okay.
Which ones did you discuss? I'm sorry.
Is that fair?
That's what I said.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, do we have this, any of these documents?
No, we do not have that. It's not, it's not on our board docs. We just have it right there.
Just right here. Is there any way we can...
Oh, so it's not on our board?
Is there any way that someone could send these to us?
Yeah, we can certainly provide the detailed documents after this evening, absolutely.
Get down, sit down there.
We can sit down there and watch.
There's a curtain there. You can go sit down there.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tracy.
Sure.
Wait a second. So the value engineered stuff, are you going to send us the issues that we looked at in value engineering and what we decide to do, what we decide not to do?
He's going to go through that tonight.
Oh, okay, that's, got it.
And then we'll get a copy of it.
So from a, from a overall standpoint, there were about 20 items that were reviewed and agreed upon in terms of them being worthwhile and valuable in proceeding with. So when you zip all the way down to the bottom, it represents about $200,000 in savings to the project, which we think is important in that because of some soil concerns that we have, we just wanted to make sure that we had enough money in the bid to accommodate that. And also to add to the project contingency for those things that may be unforeseen, that may be encountered with respect to soils specifically. So I'm certainly willing to go through all 20 items. If that's what you'd like, I can certainly do that. Pretty easily.
Can you, can you do things that are $50,000 and over?
Sure. Okay, so the, we don't have many of those, so I'll kind of lower the bar to say just the larger items, about $20,000. So we're looking at substituting or changing the roofing system. That results in about a $20,000 savings. We're looking at modifying, and this is A7.0, so the numbers are on the left. The storage room, we're thinking about reducing the width of that, not impacting the quantity of materials that can be stored there, but just reconfigure the storage room to save some square footage.
Just the roof, going from what material to what material?
Okay. Currently, it's a two-ply modified bitumen. That was what was being specified. And what was being suggested is a single-ply TPO membrane, and that results in about a $20,000 savings.
Has there been any problems with Jamestown High School's roof? Has it been fine as far as we know?
There have been no problems with the Jamestown roof.
Yeah, and this is just for, of course, just for the gymnasium addition. Yeah.
Hate it when people say that.
Another thing that was proposed was to delete all three vestibules, and we're, we think that's a good thing to proceed with, but change that number from three to one. We think maintaining two of the three vestibules is important. It still results in a savings. Another item...
I'm sorry, can you go back?
Sure.
On the, what's, where's, where are these vestibules that you're talking about? Like, what are, what are they? If you could go back and...
Edit.
Okay, right there, those three right there?
Yeah, so the vestibules serve two really important functions. So the gymnasium floor is wood, so the idea with the vestibules is it provides a barrier for moisture to the floor. So we recommend keeping the two vestibules that are on the bottom, and then the vestibule that's in the upper right-hand corner to delete that vestibule. And because of the quantity of people there, three exits are required, so we would have an exit that would go directly to the top through the exterior wall of the gym play area. So this, this would also be related to the storage, athletic storage, which is on the right. We'll reconfigure that based on the other item that was mentioned as a cost savings item.
So it takes up that, that space?
It will be extended to go all the way to the top wall by where the vestibule is now. Yeah.
And so by doing that, we don't have to worry about possible water damage to the gym floor?
Well, what we'll, what we'll do is, there are different types of trims that you can use for, for water resistance and also for drips. We may also provide an awning that we would protect the door from wind-driven rain, which is, which is the major concern.
I know that damaging the wood floors has happened at a rec center multiple times.
It, it can happen very easily if the door is right off of the gymnasium area.
So is that going to be like an emergency exit door?
It, it is. It is. There's three exits that are required based on the number of people, and so that's, that represents a required exit that we do need, in addition to the two that are in the lower left and lower right-hand corners of the gym.
Okay. So we didn't, the usable square footage of the, that hasn't, you didn't change, that hasn't changed? You didn't reconfigure anything around that?
In terms of the addition itself?
Yeah.
It does get reduced. Overall, square footage does get reduced. So currently, the, the way it's, the way the proposal is written, currently, the storage area is 20 feet wide, so we're reducing it from 20 feet to 14 feet. So...
14 feet, but then you're making it longer.
That gives the students, so that, if I understand what you're saying, they're going to have more usable surface in the actual gym itself. Am I...
Well, the, the actual gym, there's no impact to, to reducing the area within the gym area. It's, it's limited to the storage area, and then the combined vestibules at the upper, upper right and lower, lower right.
The actual gym itself, we're...
Remains the same.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure.
So what's giving if it's 14? It's going from how wide to 14 feet? Huh? 20 to 14?
Currently, it's 20 feet wide, and now it'll be 14 feet wide.
So you're losing six feet. Where's it coming? Where, where are you gaining? What's...
Okay, so the...
What I'm trying to say, like, if you've got, if it's 20 and it's going to 14, then what's giving? Like, what are you...
Going back this way?
It is going back this way, or you get, if you're not giving...
So the, the wall, the wall where the highlighter is now, it's basically moving to the left six feet?
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
But the space is also being reconfigured because we're capturing the area where the vestibule is. So we are, we're changing the wall location, but we're basically reconfiguring the storage area.
And does that, what is EL and CONC?
I'm sorry?
EL, down at the bottom, the green and...
Oh, it's, it's electrical.
Electric, I mean, so, so that's going to be, you're losing six feet there too, right? So that...
That's correct. Between the electrical closet and the, it's a concessions area, limited concessions area, that, that also will be reduced.
Okay, so the concession area itself is going to be...
We'll take, we'll take out the minimum area that we need to accommodate that six-foot change.
So concessions will be smaller, but storage base is unchanged?
Well, storage gets reconfigured, so we are reducing it, the width by six feet, from 20 feet to 14 feet.
Right.
The height, the height stays the same.
We can still store stuff because we can go up, but not this way. But concessions will get smaller. I'd like to go back to a low-ticket item, the basketball hoops.
Sure. Okay.
So how many, how many hoops does Jamestown have?
For...
Like, is that like standard? If we just have two, like, how many hoops do you normally have in an auxiliary gym?
Well, so the, what's being proposed here is not to get rid of them, but it's to take, it's called an additive alternate bid item. So if we're satisfied with the bids, the bids come in within budget, and we're also comfortable with the project contingency, then that's something that would be added to the project. And what we'll do is we'll word, word our bid documents so that we can have a little bit of a leeway between bid opening and when we can actually elect to take that, once we know what our costs are. So it, it gives you flexibility in terms of award, and also, if you can afford it, then those goals, those basketball goals would be brought back into the project at a predetermined price. These, these goals are the goals that are on the sides of the courts, and of course, the main court, those, those goals are in the base bid.
I guess, wait, to belabor the point, so like, do we know how many, how many?
Jamestown has two.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
I must admit, they've been kept in as an alternative bid, so if the construction bid comes in under bid and there's money available, there is an opportunity for the board to vote that in as an alternative bid at the time, if appropriate at the time.
So truly, if we're just talking about the larger, the larger items, the next larger item relates to the lighting type within, the lighting source within the gymnasium. And with that one, LED is currently what's specified, and we really think that that's the best choice. But if it's required for funding related to the bid, there is a savings of about $20,000 to go to fluorescent versus LED. And that's an item, too, that we'll, we'll take as an additive alternate bid item, and if we can afford it, that's the, what's specified currently is the preferred light fixture source for the gymnasium.
This has really helped. Thanks.
Oh, good. The process was really good. I think a lot of times, people think of it as a negative thing, but there was a lot of good dialogue with the independent consultant that was hired, that you guys hired. So the process was very good, and it occurred over a two-day period.
Ms. Ma'am?
May I ask him a question?
Go ahead.
Can I just have a question about cost savings when it comes to paying for the difference between fluorescent lights and LED lights? I mean, is $20,000 going to make, are we going to be saving 20? I mean, what is the cost differential for those two things for the use of the lighting?
Well, the forecast on the cost savings to go to fluorescent is, is in fact, $20,000.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the electrical bill at the end.
Oh, 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 in terms of efficiencies.
Right.
The LED is prob, probably is more, more efficient from a, from a power usage standpoint. It is.
So when, when you do these kind of studies, do you take into account the long-term maintenance issues or the savings or not, or lack of savings in electrical bills?
Without a doubt, we do. Yeah. And that's, that's part of the challenge because we feel like, in this case, LED is what was specified. We really think that's the best decision for, for the school division. But at the same time, we do know that money, money is an object. You have, we have a very defined budget, so we just want to make sure our bids are within budget, and that we've also provided some contingency for anything that's unforeseen, such as unsuitable soils, which can be challenging for any project, much less our project here with you.
I just want to remind the board that we have started putting LED lighting into all of our other gymnasiums, so this will be consistent to what we're doing with, in every other gym.
No, this is, this was very helpful because there's been a lot of discussion about this gym over this past year. Anytime we have an opportunity to get additional information like that, that's, that's really helpful. Anytime we have an opportunity to get additional information like that, that's really helpful. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions about the process or any of the line items? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So I do have a question about process. I think there was a milestone event at James City County tonight. Do we know what happened?
Yes, Mr. Schnipes can speak to that. There is a meeting of the county as well.
Yeah, tonight, there is a board meeting, the Board of Supervisors. Alan Robertson and a member of Kimberly Horn are there tonight for the S U P approval. I have not got a text from Alan yet, but we're supposed to be texting each other, let each other know what's going on.
I was hoping we would know by now.
I can check right now if you like, but I don't think he's texting us.
Can you just remind us and the public what the next steps are?
Yes, the next steps after the, after tonight is, we will do, we will have, you'll have another board meeting with the final design. So that, we plan to bring that to you in January with these V E recommendations, what it should look like. It shouldn't change that much. Jack, are you still here? It should not change that much from what you've just heard about the removing of the vestibules, some other things you wouldn't be able to see plumbing mechanical. After that, in March, we will have the I F B for the construction. So the construction documents will be created. We'll put out an invitation for bid for those construction. In May, we will start construction management. All facilities of this size and nature, anything over a million dollars, we want to do construction management or construction administration on, which will assist operations with project management. We're doing the same thing with Blair. Once construction management starts, hopefully in June, we'll have a discussion for construction and construction management. And then you will award in, at the second meeting in June, the construction and the construction management contract at the same time. We want them to start out at the same time. It's just a hand-in-hand parallels, kind of walking through everything together. So one person's not getting, or one company's not getting information that the other's not getting. We also want our construction management firm to be able to monitor what the construction company's doing. Once that starts, you have your groundbreaking, and we're off running. And the facility's supposed to be ready by September of 2018. Perfect. Any other comments from board members? Thank you, Mr. Schnipes. Keep us informed. 7.04 Equity Through Engagement. Dr. Herring?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you remember last month, we brought our first in a series of presentations on the subject of equity through engagement. And at the first presentation, we presented an overview of how all students are engaged in excellent instruction. We defined equity, and we talked about addressing equity issues as part of fulfilling our mission within W J C C. This evening, I'm delighted to ask Renee Daino to join us to present on our Bright Beginnings program. This is one of the ways in which we impact the barriers that poverty presents to our children with regards to student achievement and student success. And Ms. Daino's here to present this evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our mission in Bright Beginnings is simply to provide each student what he or she needs in order to be successful in school or in life. The brain research has identified the extreme rapid rate of brain development during the first five years of life. It has always made good educational sense to provide high-quality early childhood education programs. But Nobel Prize-winning economist James Heckman has been pointing out the economic benefits for over 20 years now. This community recognized the benefits of early childhood education programs decades ago. In 1976, the Norwich Early Education and Development Center, lovingly known to staff and families as the Need Center, was established to educate children identified with special education needs, children with a developmental delay or a disability. Bright Beginnings was established in 1983, and that was done as a federal demonstration grant to provide early childhood services to children at risk. The first Bright Beginnings classroom was at Matthew Whaley Elementary School and later moved to Rawlsburg. In 1996, the two separate early childhood programs were combined under the Bright Beginnings umbrella so that all children were served in classrooms together and served closer to home. In 2002, Williamsburg, James City County was recognized as one of 10 communities as a community of excellence. It was a national award, and it was presented in Washington, D.C. There were a number of community members who received the award in Washington. And the award was really for the development of a seamless system of early childhood services for children from birth to five. And the group of people who went to Washington to accept that award were from Child Development Resources, the Community Action Agency, Williamsburg, James City County Public Schools, the City of Williamsburg, and James City County. An essential component of the Bright Beginnings program from the very beginning has been family engagement. Teachers provide monthly home visits to each family, and families have the option to do those home visits, either at home, at school, or in some cases, at their work site. I'd like to give you a little bit of a snapshot of who our Bright Beginnings students are. They range in age from two years to five years, when they're ready to move on to kindergarten. And the numbers on this slide represent the children who are currently in our classrooms right now. So over 50% of our children are children who have a developmental delay or a disability. 43% are children who have identified adverse childhood experiences. We used to refer to those as risk factors. But adverse childhood experiences is something that's come out of the research from the Harvard Center on the Developing Child. But they are risk factors. 55% of our Bright Beginnings population are economically disadvantaged. 47% are minority students. 53% are white. And 42 of our 327 students currently enrolled are from families whose primary language is not English. And there are families that represent 12 different languages just within our Bright Beginnings program. This slide gives you information about the Virginia's Foundation Blocks for Early Learning. And the Foundation Blocks for Early Learning were developed for four-year-old students. And it gives information about what children should learn in preschool as four-year-olds. So you see content information here. What you don't see are the skills and abilities, the how of learning. Things like attending and engaging, persistence, self-regulation, curiosity, creativity, and problem-solving skills. These are all foundational skills to being able to learn new information. And in Bright Beginnings, we have a very intense focus on these foundational skills, how we learn. Once children learn how to learn, then new information is easy to absorb and connect. If you've not visited one of our Bright Beginnings classrooms recently, I have a quick video tour to give you some sense of what our classrooms look like. These were not staged film clips. I simply took an iPad one day, a few weeks ago, and went from classroom to classroom to give you a sense of what happens in those classrooms, from our two-year-old students up through our children who are getting ready to transition to kindergarten next school year.
You notice there's one little teeny-tiny metal ball?
Yeah, there's two.
You see two? Maybe some have two. I see one in there. And so when you shake it, that metal ball starts bouncing around inside of there. And that's what makes that sound wave that goes to your ear, right? Do you remember that letter? No. You know what? I love that she said no, because sometimes we don't remember.
It's a big D.
Hold on a second, and we need help. So that, what are you going to do to get help?
It's a big B and a little d.
Yeah, I'm going to tell your friends one more time.
Big D and a little d.
We have a big uppercase D and a little lowercase d up here, don't we? Yeah, yeah?
You're welcome to visit our classrooms anytime at all.
You didn't have to tell us they weren't staged, because you can't stage a two-year-old.
No, that's right. That's absolutely right. Yes.
Questions, comments from board members?
I have a few more slides. I should have ended it with the children.
I thought you were telling me to come visit your classrooms. My bad, sorry.
One of the standards that we use to determine the efficacy of our Bright Beginnings program is a nationally-normed tool called Teaching Strategies Gold. And this tool was normed on a very diverse and a large group of children from birth to kindergarten. So it helps, and the norming group included children with and without disabilities. So we're looking at a nice, broad group of children with a lot of different characteristics. In order for a child to have, to be considered in the accomplished range, they have to be able to perform the skills independently and consistently. Children in that emerging range are children who are still requiring some help from an adult, either prompts or physical help from an adult. So this data is, takes a look at our children who were rising kindergarten students at the end of the past school year. So they were our children who were four years old, moving into kindergarten this year. And Teaching Strategies Gold tells us about kindergarten benchmarks. Do these children have the knowledge and skills that they should have to be successful in kindergarten? So this tool gives us a nice look at the whole child. So you can see from a very diverse group of children how well our children are doing when they're ready to leave preschool and move on to kindergarten. Going to drill down a little bit more. A second tool that we use is called the PALS PK. And the PALS is mandated in the state of Virginia for all four-year-old children who attend public school. And that acronym stands for Phrenemic Awareness and Literacy Screening. I'm going to start you on the right-hand side. We'll go from the right to the left. The column on the far right is the range of scores that the state has said a child who's ready to go on to kindergarten should be scoring somewhere in this range at the end of their four-year-old year. So if you go to that middle column, the spring average score, that's the score where our bright, the average score for our Bright Beginning students in the spring, just before they were ready to go to kindergarten. Two of those that I'd like to point out particularly, the lowercase alphabet recognition, the average score being 18, which is above the range even, that the state has put out there for us. And letter sounds is significantly higher than the expectation. I think that has a lot to do with our teachers and speech therapists working together and that a program that we've put in place over the last couple of years. If you work backwards now to that fall average score, in most cases, that fall average score is just to give us a baseline for where children start. Our Bright Beginnings children start higher than most four-year-old students in Virginia. That really speaks to the strong instruction, I believe, that's happening with our two- and three-year-old Bright Beginning students. These are some of the other subtests on the PALS, and you will see the same very strong outcomes for our Bright Beginning students. This is not something we can do alone. We're really proud of our outcomes. They come as a result of a very talented staff, strong partnerships with families, and really strong working relationships with other community agencies and community support. Thank you for your time.
All right, you're done. Any comments from board members?
Yeah, I just, I didn't realize that it had grown that large, that we had that many students in there. But I think the other thing is, really do a good job of interacting with the other agencies. Because that's really the way it's going to be successful, is when you work with those other agencies. And they, they'll give you referrals, and it's just, yeah, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daino, for all this. Are you seeing there being kind of a continuing demand for this or a growing demand? I understand from my visit to you that there's a waitlist for some of these. And if you could just speak about that, so our community might be watching, understands the need.
We typically do have a waitlist. We screen throughout the year, and our staff does comprehensive developmental screenings for about 450 students every year. But we typically do, children who are identified in need of special education services must be placed so that they can receive those services. If they're identified for special ed services, we do not have a waitlist. But for children who are identified at risk, we do have a waiting list. We place them in classrooms based on the priority. We look at those risk factors. And typically, children who are placed earlier are children who have multiple risk factors. There are other children who, depending on the time of year that they're found eligible, we may not have places in a classroom. That's particularly true for that group of children who are three years old and fairly high-risk.
Schools where they're in now, are those like centrally located? Are all the kids bused? Or I'm just curious about how that?
Most of the children go back and forth to school on a bus. Some families choose to transport on their own, but most children do come on a school bus. And that's part of their daily routine, getting on the bus, and they love the big yellow school bus. But several years ago, when the board asked for a strategic plan for our preschool program, we made very big efforts to make sure that there were preschool locations either within a school zone or adjacent to a school zone. So if a child is not able to attend in the zone where they live, there would be a zone adjacent to that where there would be preschool available. they, there would be a zone adjacent to that where there would be preschool available.
Do you see a need to have them, have the program located in any additional elementary schools? Or does it seem to work the way it is now?
It's working well the way it is now. However, we have been examining the benefits of potentially expanding to some additional sites.
I'm assuming for transportation, are they on a separate bus from the... they would have to be, right?
Yes, yes. Our preschoolers are transported on separate buses, well, buses separate from K-12 students. There's a driver and an aide on each of those buses. And there are car seats on the buses. So the little ones are transported in car seats. Car seats, and if they're four, they may be transported with a seatbelt.
I just wanted to echo again, this is probably one of the best examples of investing dollars early on. The data clearly shows that the students that go through Bright Beginnings are kindergarten-ready. And so that's phenomenal, and it's a feather in our cap. I don't know if the greater community realizes that our community has been able to collaborate, leverage resources for over 40 years. And we do a really good job of preparing our youngsters for kindergarten. And so, kudos to you and all that you've done.
And our staff, it's a great team. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Zone B says, "A feather in the cap, I say a jewel in our crown." This is an amazing program, and it's nationally-known. You mentioned the award in DC. But, you know, the two things that are always front of mind for me regarding Bright Beginnings is we're not meeting the need in our community. And that need is growing. Kids who are living at risk in this community, that as a raw number and as a percentage of our population is growing each year. And so I would like to see this program grow to meet that need. I also applaud the social supports and the work with families. And I often wonder what, you know, they go into kindergarten-ready, the data's clear on that. But that, some of those social supports, the home visiting, that doesn't follow the family at current. And I think that's in part what helps families be so successful in helping their children get a really great education. So anyway, congratulations and thanks for coming to share your work with us.
Ms. Young?
I'm just, I'm very impressed with what you've shown us tonight, and I appreciate that. I do have a question about long-range success. Have there already been any longitudinal studies as far as the benefits for long-range for these students?
We have looked at some of that. And we do have information that we've put together in past years, looking at PALS scores and other things at the first and second grade level. We do have some of that, and it does show continuing benefits.
What about third and fourth grade level? Have you gone that far yet?
We have not. There are a lot of national studies that have. We've encountered, we've encountered some challenges in terms of identifying and following students through the system. But...
If you find that, I would love to see it.
Okay.
Are able to produce anything. Thank you.
Mrs. Young, probably with our new information, student information system, we're in a better position to actually tag students and recognize those who are moving through our system. So over time, we'll be able to provide more data about the long-term effects of the program. Also, we'll be bringing to you at Budget Retreat in January some possible ideas about another site for our early childhood program for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Heron.
Other board members? Thank you, Ms. Diana. This is a great, great program. You and your staff do an exceptional job. And this is the growing age, is another sign of our growing community. And we have to, too, what we can do to meet that need. Expand facilities, and, because we're starting to run out of classrooms as well at those elementary schools, too. So, thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you for your support of Bright Beginnings.
Thank you. 7.05, Portrait of a Graduate, class of 2016, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. This evening, annually, we bring you some information about our Portrait of a Graduate, which provides data to the board as both a presentation and an infographic that you should have in front of you this evening. And to present this information tonight is Mr. Thorpe. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Heron. Tonight, we are going to present you information related to the class of 2016 Portrait of a Graduate. As part of this overview, we will look at this graduating classes' SAT and ACT results, along with graduation rates, advanced placement information, and after-graduation future plans. And during the course of the next few slides, we will refer to information on the screen, as well as the infographic that is at your workstation. The class of 2016 had an on-time graduation rate of 91.5%. The on-time graduation rate is the percentage of students graduating in four years. You can see that our cohort completion rate is 93.9%. And the cohort completion rate is essentially the on-time graduation rate, plus any students who earned a GED or a certificate of completion. The dropout rate for this cohort was 4.3%. On the Scholastic Aptitude Test, students can earn scale scores of between 200 and 800 on the reading and math batteries. And the writing portion of this test is both optional and scored separately. WJCC students' average score on the reading part of the SAT was 539. This is a slight increase from the previous class's mean, and still outpacing the state and national averages. On the SAT Math, WJCC students' average score was 543, again, up from the previous class's mean in this area and greater than the state and national averages.
God, that's all good, but didn't they change the SATs and...
We're back to 1,600. We're not, we're not doing 2,400 anymore. So, again, the writing is optional and scored separately. Yes. Moving on to the American College Test. Students who take the ACT are scored in four areas: English, Math, Reading, and Science. The highest possible score in each of these subtests is 36. As you can see here and on the infographic, WJCC students' average in each of these subtests were greater than both the Virginia State and National averages. The class of 2016's ACT scores were slightly better than those of the previous graduating class.
Sorry, I just need clarification about this. So the purple...
Purple is, purple is the graduating class of 2015.
And then the green is the graduating class of 2016? But how do we know where we stand with Virginia versus... I'm assuming, I was looking for something to be similar to the SAT graphic.
Absolutely, absolutely. If you look on your infographic, up to the top in the middle, our ACT scores are on the orange band, and then the Virginia mean is in the green. National is in the blue. College readiness benchmarks are established to determine the minimum score needed on the ACT, on an ACT subject area subtest, to indicate a 50% chance of obtaining a B or higher, or a 75% chance of obtaining a C or higher in corresponding credit-bearing college courses. The national benchmark ACT scores are 18 for English, Math 22, Reading 22, Science and 23. And so this graphic shows the percentage of the graduating class that scored at or above these ACT subtest benchmarks. So for instance, 69% of the class of 2016's ACT test takers scored at or above the math benchmark of 22 points. The College Board's Advanced Placement, or AP, program, offers high school students opportunities to complete college-level courses and potentially earn college credit while still in high school. WJCC offers 31 Advanced Placement courses, either through direct instruction or online through Virtual Virginia. Colleges and universities will often consider students who score 3, 4, or 5 on an AP exam for exemption from coursework, with college credit granted for these courses prior to entering college or university. Scores on Advanced Placement exams may also be used by colleges and universities to consider student scholarship opportunities. Approximately 70% of our WJCC AP exams earned a score of 3, 4, or 5. This next slide refers to career and technical education. And I want to make it clear that the data that's on this slide is for all students who took CTE courses last year. So this is not just a cohort of graduating class of 2016 information. 595 of our 1,081 students enrolled earned industry certifications. Participating students earned at least one of 36 certifications. The WJCC class of 2016 students were offered $18.9 million in scholarships. And in June of 2016, graduating seniors completed a survey about each of their plans after graduation. This graphic shows the class of 2016's plans. This is the presentation that we have for you. Are there any questions that we can answer tonight?
Are we gonna get copies of this?
Yes.
Of the presentation?
Yeah, I don't have this. I just have the one page, I just...
Yeah. Any other comments from board members?
So I just wanted clarification. So we have annually around 100 students participating in New Horizons, but we have approximately 600 students who are able to access industry certifications. That's, that's great. So can you explain that to me?
Uh, I know that the data that we included included both New Horizons and WJCC CTE classes. If you have a more specific question, I can get that information to you.
Does that include, like, you know, I'm thinking of the CAD/CAM classes that the students take? Is that included in this?
Yes. That is one of the 36.
And is there any way we can see kind of more of a breakdown of what makes up that number?
And what the certifications are? Like, I would be curious to know what... And if there are differences between the three high schools, I would be curious to know that.
Great. I have the 36 here, but instead of listing them all, I can provide those to you, along with the other information you requested.
It would be interesting me to see the breakdown by high schools as well, because...
Yes.
Scott, do we know, like, for example, I'm looking at the employment numbers on that slide that I have in front of me. Do we know what jobs they got? Or if they actually have jobs? Or I'm not sure what that means. What does that mean?
I am not aware that the survey asks for the specific type of employment or the specific job. But, again, that's information that we can get to you.
Oh, so that's a question. So where do, so you're asking this from a survey? You're getting, can you explain how you get this data?
Right, yep. Again, just prior to graduation, in June of 2016, each of those students who was earning a diploma, they were provided with a survey regarding their future plans. And this is the data that came out.
From the people who responded?
That's correct.
What was the response rate?
Again, I'm sorry, I don't have that information, but I can, I can get that to you.
So really, it's...
Self-reported.
Said, "We're gonna get a job."
Yes.
You don't actually know if they actually got a job or what the job is. I guess the other way to make that, you know, trying to make a connection here, I'm looking at the, all the industry certifications. I'm assuming they acquired those before they graduated. Do we know the ones who got that certification, they end up getting a job, you know, after they graduate?
Not sure if we have any way of knowing that. But again, the questions about the survey are very relevant.
I think it's important because it would, it's useful to know if we have students that are going through those programs to get that certification. Do they in fact, because everybody's all, you know, it's like you hear that all the time. Well, they're not qualified, or they, you know, but these kids... Young people would be qualified if they've gone through, you know, these programs. Do they in fact get jobs?
Dr. Beers, I believe New Horizons does keep some records of the number of students that go into jobs directly associated with the certifications.
But we also have students up here. In fact, we have many more students up here that are going through these programs and down. So that would be really, you know, pretty... The reason it would be critical is, if those kids are getting jobs, it would be, it would be helpful for other students in terms of considering whether I want to get this or get that. It's like, hey, they're getting jobs. So I just, I don't know. And I, gosh, Scott, I don't know how, you know, you do that. But, but it's the same thing, you know, that the college, you know, do the same thing. You send out a survey, you finish your program, you're, what are you doing now? And, gosh, it would be really...
It would certainly speak to the readiness of the program.
Right, that whole workforce emphasis. If we can't show them, you know, if we can't show that that's, that's... I'm sure, I know it's working, it's just, it's the...
And I guess, Scott, so we graduate approximately 900 students each year?
We actually had 842 that were either earned a diploma or a certificate of completion or a GED.
So for me, what would be telling is the response rate. And so how many students didn't respond? And what happened to those students?
We will get that information to you. That is valuable information.
Yeah, and then just because maybe the community isn't looking at this, the broader community, just for me, again, what was telling was there are distinct differences between the three high schools in terms of students who are graduating with advanced diplomas versus standard diplomas, and even SAT scores. So something for the broader community to understand that there are distinct differences.
Definitely.
I would be really interested in how and when the survey, exactly, like, how was the survey being asked? And for me, I look at, if we've gotten 842 graduates, do we really have 450 of them going to a four-year college? Is that pretty, is that... Can we quantify that?
Going by, going by that data, that would sound close, Ms. Hummel.
But that's only if 842 responded.
Yes, I believe we have a very high response rate, because the students are still in school. And so they're self-reporting where they're going to go next. And so we're, it's not, we don't know if this data proves completely true after they leave our system. But this is the last time we can actually get students to self-report what their plans are for the upcoming year. So we will certainly find the response rate by high school. But I believe it is a fairly high response rate, because the students are still right there and can actually take the survey.
I mean, is it done like in a homeroom? Is it done sort, or is it, is it...
Online?
Online?
It's probably different by high school on the administration. But we'll find out the details, because we don't have those this evening.
Because, yeah, I really think, because I really think the certifications are absolutely crucial, too, if we're really gonna get serious about that whole workforce effort. And I can't imagine, near the end of those programs, we couldn't go in and, you know, and just, near the end of the year, you know, the end of, the end of their senior year, what are your job prospects? You finish up the mechanics program, or you're gonna be a lab tech or whatever? Are the jobs out there? Did you get a job? Did you get a job? That sort of helps reinforce that whole, you know, and I have to go to college. Usually, you know, it would be, I think, a lot of the kids who go to college, they probably know less than what they want to actually do than the kids who are in the certification programs. Yeah, I, I think it's a little more self-selective in those programs.
Thank you for that request for information. We will, we will get that.
Any other comments? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. 7.07, School Board Self-Evaluation. Dr. Beers?
Okay.
Nope, I'm sorry, I missed one. School Start Time, 7.06. Dr. Heron?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. At the request of the School Board this evening, we are providing some preliminary information on the impact of changing school start times. This is not a new topic. It has been discussed by previous boards. And Mr. Thorpe, there we go. And to provide some historical perspective, we're literally just outlining some of the times where we have information in, in previous board agendas and board minutes regarding this particular topic. We discussed it in 2007 in association with tier transportation, how that would impact, and actually voted on actual times, the tiers which we currently still operate. We again discussed it in June 2008, the impacts of reverting to a two-tier system and how that would impact start times, and again in July of 2008. And going through to the next slide, just again to give you some perspective, it became a subject again when we opened two new schools. Every time you open a school, it's a subject that tends to come into the forefront of our minds again. There were, at that time, there was a lot of work from what I could understand in reading, a lot of work done by staff and options presented to the board again. July 2010, we actually decided to stick with what was done already. So brought lots of information, but then didn't make a change. The current board at that time chose not to make a change because of the complexity of, of this particular decision. And in September, where there was some discussion about research regarding teens and start times, in fact, we heard a student speaking about that this evening to us. And then again, March 2015, we had yet another discussion on, from the dais about buses and school start times. Very important subject, but not a new subject, but one that we wanted to, to bring to you some information and then look for some guidance as to where to go with that this evening. Mr. Thorpe is going to present a couple of slides, just quick overviews of research around this topic, and then he's going to hand off to one or two other members of staff as well. Thank you.
Good evening again. We have investigated recent research related to school start times, and regarding this research, we have a few talking points. Overall, a number of research studies support a shift to later school start times for middle school and high school students. Findings from the National Sleep Foundation show that teenagers need between eight and 10 hours of sleep. The typical adolescent's natural time to fall asleep may be 11:00 PM or even after. Because of this change in their internal clocks, teens may feel awake at bedtime even though they may be exhausted. This leads to sleep deprivation in many teens who have to wake up early for school. Also, a Hanover Research article highlighted research findings that delayed school start times that, that enables middle school and high school students to receive more sleep. In addition, the article highlights a study associating later high school start times with lower accident rates for teens. And in a policy statement published in August of 2014, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends middle school and high schools to delay the start of class to 8:30 AM or later. Their findings show that early high school start times contribute to sleep deprivation among adolescents, and the recommended shift to later high school start times would align school schedules to the biological sleep rhythms of adolescents, whose sleep-wake cycles begin to shift up to two hours later at the start of puberty. Mr. Powell has information to share related to the potential impacts of shifting high school start times.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Any discussion of changing school start times regardless of the level requires careful consideration of the impact those changes would have on instruction, staff, and the community. Later start times for high school students would necessitate shifting the start time of middle or elementary students, either of which require examining the effect those changes would have on students, parents, and teachers in that group of schools. WJCC currently has a variety of shared programs located at Thomas Nelson Community College, New Horizons Regional Education Center, and the Governor's School for Science and Technology. Students attending these programs could use, could be impacted by school start change. Morning programs at New Horizons and Governor's School currently run from 7:00 AM until 10:30, not including travel time to and from the programs. Students attending the morning session could start their school day prior to 7:00 AM and possibly end after 3:30. Although the number of itinerant teachers and staff that travel between our high schools and middle schools is limited number, a change in start time would also impact WJCC's current model of sharing personnel between levels. Besides looking at the impact of changing start times would have on instructional programs, we also would need to consider any effect a change would have on students, teachers, and the community. Many of our high school students have after-school jobs and family responsibilities. Several of them care for their younger siblings or participate in after-school programs for elementary schools. Changing school start times would impact the work schedule for these students as well as have an impact on their employers. The domino effect of any change could require parents in the community and teachers and staff with young children to make alternate arrangements for after-school care for elementary students. A change in high school start time would impact our students' athletes as well. With practice starting later in the afternoon, we would need to look at what effect this would have on scheduling shared James City County and Williamsburg facilities. Additionally, unless other schools against which we compete change their start times, students would miss instructional time due to scheduled away games and competitions. Finally, a change in high school start times would have implications for our operations department as well. In addition to investigating the impact of our transportation department and schedules, WJCC's cafeteria and custodial staff would also require adjustments in their work schedules at any level affected by a change. These are just some of the areas that would need further consideration prior to changing start times regardless of the level shifted. Mrs. Bourgeois is here to now speak about Student Voice.
Good evening. Recently, there was an opportunity to seek input from the high school representatives who serve on the Student Advisory Committee. There's a representative for each grade level from the three high schools, and as advisory committee to the board, these students provide insight and suggestions from their perspective on matters impacting school students. The committee held its first meeting of the year on November 9th, and the high school start times was a discussion item on the agenda. Students were grouped by grade level to brainstorm what they saw as the pros and cons of moving the high school start time to a later tier. The groups then shared their pros and cons. The responses were consistent across the groups, and much of it mirrors the considerations previously shared. We're going to start by looking at the pros. Student advisory members were knowledgeable about circadian rhythms and the natural time clock for high schools. They actually identified the exact time period of 11:00 PM to 8:00 AM as the body's natural time clock for sleep. So they knew their stuff. The members felt that having a later start time would provide students with more energy and the ability to be more productive in their early classes. They also identified benefits such as time to make and eat breakfast. They felt that there would be safer driving conditions in the morning because they're more alert. They also felt that it would result in better health and overall better grades. They also identified cons to the consideration for moving to a later start time. There were examples as to how it might negatively impact after-school activities and employment. Athletics was an area of concern regarding practice times and the challenge of darkness, as well as the impact on away events and the time students would be getting home after an event, or the amount of time missed from class if they have to leave for an event before the school day is over. There would also be an effect on work schedules for local employers and students. They also voiced a concern regarding teacher availability to provide help and supervise clubs after school. They felt a number of their teachers are able to do so now because their younger children are still in school during that time, allowing the teachers to stay after school with them. They also felt that the change would make it harder for parents to coordinate childcare for younger siblings, and they expressed safety concerns about younger students starting school earlier. The student members also shared how the time right after school is often used for homework, studying, and meeting assignment deadlines, some for online classes such as Virtual Virginia. Finally, the students agreed that starting school later would just mean that most students would go to bed later in the evening, so they did not seem, think that they would result in an increase in overall sleep time. So their discussion results. The discussion by the committee members was lively and focused. As an observer, I was impressed with their thoughtful discussion and reflection. During the discussion, it seemed that the group was going to be supportive of a change in start times, but by the end of the discussion, they were unanimous in their recommendation that high school start times remain on the current schedule. They stated that the advantage of getting out at 2:20 gives them time to get homework done, participate in extracurricular activities, and work if they so choose. This input is respectfully submitted by the Student Advisory Committee members to the School Board.
Okay. That's all of the information we have this evening, and really would ask the board about next steps to take. Obviously, we have a lot of change coming up in the next year, but we want to give you an opportunity to discuss and give us some sense of where you want us to go with, with this particular topic.
Board member comments?
Yeah. Dr. Beers? I'd like to know, Arico's been doing this for quite a while now. Have you checked other school districts that are doing this? Because Arico actually, they only have a two-tier system, and I'm sure that some of the same complaints were voiced by high school, middle school students as well, but they managed to do that successfully. Alexandria, I'm sorry, Fairfax managed, it took them a few years, they ended up with a hybrid kind of, I don't, simply because, I don't want to offend the students, but I think the research is pretty substantial. And I know it's a hard thing to do. I know Fairfax County took three or four years to finally figure out the way to do it, but they've done it. And Arico does it. I have a grand, I have two granddaughters up there. The elementary student, she's around seven, and the middle school stu, no, I'm sorry, they're both in middle school now, so they're both at the same time. But last year, yeah, so they, and the older one slept longer because they're middle school students, their middle school schedule starts later. So I, I, I for one, like, still, you know, seriously consider this. I know about the three-tier system, about a two-tier system, and I know that transportation, the whole, I know it's, you know, I think about it, it's mind-boggling, but districts have figured out how to do it. I hope we, and if I could, I'll be honest, it's probably the one area I get more calls and emails from parents than anything else. They know that we've talked about it for 10 years, studies, and they still want it, they still consider that a hybrid.
Ms. Olby?
Dr. Heron, to that point, so I guess it would be useful to have a cost breakdown of the two-tier versus the three-tier, like, and, and maybe you're familiar, Fairfax County did just recently make that change, but that was a costly change. I think that would be useful information. And did just wanted to acknowledge the, the student who was here tonight and appreciate his passion, and certainly he had his facts. And I think we as a board understand that the research does show that, that students would benefit from a later start time, but then there's also the reality of that. And so it sounds like the students who were interviewed and participated in this, in this advisory committee meeting got that. But would it be possible to survey all of our students so that all of our students could understand the process and get some buy-in? Like, those 12 get it, so we have buy-in, but I think the other, how many students we have, maybe...
And I believe everything's possible. We have looked at other systems. We, we really are looking for direction about whether it's the will of the entire board that we take this as an area to invest a lot of staff time in and bring you back a lot of information, and whether it's the will of the board to actually pursue this, to make a decision, to go this route at this moment in time, or is it something for later? If, if it's something the board wants to pursue right now, then we'll dedicate time and effort to bring a much more detailed information to you, and maybe with even some options as to how we might go.
I, I was at that meeting, and the students were very animated. It was very, very productive and enlightening. Mature beyond their years, I certainly don't think I would have thought of that. All I would think about is, oh, I'll get more sleep. But they, they were thoughtful, and, but I, because of knowing the research and knowing how important it is for our students to have adequate sleep to function well, I, I would like to pursue this, and I, I agree with Ms. Olby, I'd like to know about the, the cost, and the cost versus a one-tier system, a two-tier system, a three-tier system, and because the last school district that I worked in, they had a one-tier system. I think all the kids came to school about the same time. I think the high school, middle school started maybe 15 to 20 minutes earlier, but they dismissed at the same time. And I'd be curious about that because, and I do understand that we would, I, I also think we would need to survey the community and parents because, you know, I want, want my teenager to get home safely and, and be well.
Ms. Cook?
I, I think the research is clear, and I'm in favor of having a school division that honors the health and wellness needs of its students. Asking them to arrive at school at a time that medical professionals and research suggests is unhealthy for them is something that I just don't support. So I, I do want to pursue this. I appreciate the feedback that, that we got, and, and I want to solicit more of it to explore every option, but I really don't think now is the time. I think we should wait until we've got a new superintendent in place and have grappled with the beginnings of redistricting, since both of those things will have a big impact under, on this topic, and they're huge undertakings. So I suggest we move forward with this, but we pick up the conversation again in March or April.
I concur.
I think that's what we need to do.
I also agree with that. Particularly, I would like to know the finances involved because we're going to be dealing with some tough budget issues coming up with the VRS, and I, I think it's important for the community to know as much as we might be behind or later start times, if it means that there's a trade-off on perhaps giving teachers raises or giving them some of their benefits or having to take benefits away in order to buy more buses. Those are the kind of discussions that we have to have.
Comments, board members?
Fairfax, what time do their high schools start?
I think they only gained, what, 20 or 30 minutes?
20 minutes. I think there was a, overall, after a long period of discussion and time, there was very little movement on time, but we can provide you a link to that information.
And they actually, they, they made an excellent presentation.
It was last year, yeah.
In a speech. The superintendent was there, there were a couple of board members who initially, one really supported it and the other one didn't. And they went through this, a really good presentation, laying the pros and cons and getting the information, and it would be helpful, I think, just to talk to some of those people. And I kept the notes, I know what the problems were. And I kept the notes, I know what the problems were. They pretty much looked like the list that you had over there, but they, they, you know, managed to figure out a way, and it wasn't a total, it wasn't, they ended up with more, it was more hybrid. And Arico has, as I understand it, they have a two-tier system. Have earlier, it's not outrageously early for elementary students, but it is earlier secondary students, six or seven through 12, start later. So, I don't, you know, I don't think it's a waste of time to get some information from some of those.
I move that we come back to this and...
Just thought I'd like to make a couple of comments first, if I could. The, so Fairfax, it'd be interesting to know how much they do, how much they actually changed their time, and also, you know, we've talked about a lot about high school, later high school start times, that equals earlier elementary school start times. So, we also need to make sure we look at, look at the elementary school parents and make sure they understand that this is, this is also their kids moving to, moving from where they are to, to a newer time, and so we just, we need to make sure that they're aware of the impacts to them, and...
Can I, can I add?
Sure.
Do you mind?
No, I don't.
When I, in my neighborhood, when buses from Matthew Whaley come in there, it's 5:00. And I have, I have parents who would like the schools, their elementary schools to start earlier, so their kids get home. That's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. So, as far as where we go from here, we've got a lot of demands on staff time, what, where can we go from here? What does, what does it mean?
I think probably what we could bring first is maybe an outline of what we think needs to be done to provide you the type of information you need to make a really good decision around, around this topic. So, we'll certainly, we'll maybe do a timeline of what we could do and what that, what that might include, whether it's a survey or something like that. I know we've just done a staff survey, we've just done a superintendent survey. I'm not sure we want to do that right now in the community. They probably need a break from surveys before we launch another one if we're going to get some really good input on it. Maybe a first step for us is to engage more with the systems that have actually gone through this, and then develop some kind of a timeline for you and the types of information you would like to have.
Yeah, I think, I think the budget number is also a pretty, a pretty important, important thing to do, just to make sure we understand what those costs would be.
Okay.
There's probably a budget for changing start times on a three-tier, three-tier system and changing start times on a two-tier system, so how much money we would need for additional buses to go to two tiers, and...
And even the impact of money is going to be affected by redistricting. So, if we were to do a study right now and bring you specific information, it's going to cost this to go to two tiers with our current situation. We don't know how redistricting may actually impact that as well. There's a lot of factors, I mean, maybe the will of the community and what their input would be, maybe a first thing that doesn't, isn't impacted by redistricting.
Right. So, Mrs. Olenby recommended that we hold off until April. Yes, that's, yes, ma'am.
When are we going to be talking about the redistricting, and when is that going to be settled? Because I would think you'd table this until after we've made some of those decisions.
Well, I think we're going to be looking at an RFP for redistricting early spring, and that process really won't begin until the fall.
Or just until the fall. I'll conclude early spring.
Early spring to move into the next year, and only then will we really know what it takes to do a two-tier system, because all of our roots will change or rights will change.
Right. So, start thinking about it again in April? April, and then I guess in April, we kind of look at, look at budgetary numbers for how much, I think the, in the baby steps of it, kind of look at round numbers for three tiers versus two tiers, and what those start times might look like, understanding it's just kind of notional discussions, but that, does that work?
Sure. We can bring back information to have another piece of the discussion in April. Absolutely.
Okay. So, moving on, 7.07, School Board Self-Evaluation. Dr. Beers?
I don't think we want to go over this item by item, but what I, I promised I would do this, is I have, and I've reworked some of them, I pulled various items from various instruments, and I've identified those here, and I decided to go with six questions. It may be that there are 12 indicators for each one, that may be too many indicators, I don't know how much time you want to take filling something like this out, but I tried to capture most of the major areas. The other thing, I went back to our SOP, that very first page, where it identifies what our roles and responsibilities are, and although I did not identify each one of those individually, they are clearly covered by one or more of the items in each one of these, and I thought that was, you know, a good, good place to start. The only other thing, so really, it's, and I wrote at the top, feedback, it's, that's really sort of where we are, is I would say, we're not going to look this over tonight, but I would say, look it over, see if it seems reasonable in terms of the general categories that, that I came up with. I would envision a form that has a Likert scale attached to it, or as part of it, and going down each one of those indicators, you know, you would indicate if you agree or disagree. And I thought, because I heard this, that this was done by several other boards, in terms of collating the information and, and also the comments, is they had two board members do it. Collate the data, come up with scores, that sort of thing, and then write out each one of the comments that were, that were done. But it's, it's your evaluation, so it's, this is just a, you know, a start at a, at a form, and we already decided that we, you know, we don't have to deal with this until January. It's not going to, you know, that far behind, and it will be after the 12 months. That's where I am, you know, it's like, I don't own this at all. I feel like doing or not doing. I actually thought myself, when I was looking it over, that it is possible that had, there should be a B there, I'm sorry, there's not, A and B, how well has the board done its job, and how well has the board conducted itself. There may be, you know, unnecessary overlap there, and that, you know, that whole, that could be just one category instead of two. You need to do, take it home, look it over, because I know you've only had a day or so to look at it, and if you want me to keep working on this, give me feedback.
I was looking for page numbers.
Sorry?
I was looking for page numbers. Any comments from board members?
Thank you, Dr. Beers, for your first stab at this. I would just comment that when I was looking through this on, under F, you would want all of your statements to be positive, right?
I've tried.
So, on, because you're doing the Likert scale, so you want them all to be consistent. So, under 1, where it says, "I've been in board meetings where subtleties of issues dealt with escaped the board," that's a negative comment, so I would just change it.
I could, yeah, rephrase it so it's possible.
Exactly. It's just a matter of rephrasing it, and then for all of these, if you want, if you guys want to come up with, okay, whatever the questions are, I can easily put this in a Qualtrix survey. I can do it in 10 minutes with a anon, you know, the link, email you guys, it gets all done, and then it spits out the report to everyone, and it's anonymous. So, if you want me to...
If you wanted, yeah, okay.
I'm totally, I do it all the time, so it's easy, I can do it, but that would be my...
So, all you need is the instrument.
I think my only response to it is it's long, it's really long, but maybe if it's just using a scale and we just have to...
Right, that's the thing, if, the way this would be, you'd have a kind of a matrix, you'd have the Likert scale, and then...
Off to the side.
Off to the side, so all you're doing is reading and going, you know...
And if you think 12 is too many, if you want to go to, I think you need to, 10 is a nice number, and the thing to do is look that over, look them over, if you can, if there's, you know, a couple there, that's what we need to do, is just, you know, pare it down.
Okay.
So, that feedback you can send to me, and then, once we, you know, once we finally agree on what we want to do.
Do you have a timeline in mind?
Well, we had talked, I forget which meeting it was, we had talked, there was no time to do it in December, and I know we're really going to be busy in January. I don't, I would not want the year to get so far away that you start to, you know, so I don't know. What do you think, Jim?
Well, having only had a chance to look at this today, I finished it out this morning, because I guess it came yesterday afternoon, I think we need some time to, to look at it, and what we really, I guess the other issue too is, for me, is what is the purpose of the self-evaluation? You're doing evaluation of employees, you come up with a number, and you kind of rate that, is it, is it the, is it, what's the value of coming up with a number for...
Most of, most of the ones that, you know, the ones that I looked at, it was basically to look at interaction between the board, the public, superintendent, each other, and whether the board feels it is accomplishing the goals that it, you know, that it set out. It's more, it's more an educational thing.
Right, exactly, self-reflection, and so, so the question is, do you really put a score to it, or do you just, is it something that each member should think about and...
Well, I think, I think a score is helpful, if you're, if you're, just to get a sense of where we, where we seem to think we're strong, or where we think we have some challenges.
Right. And there's no, this stuff is copyrighted, this stuff is copyrighted.
No, but both of these, at the bottom of each one of them, said you are, this is a nonprofit organization, you are free to use, adapt, change wherever you wish.
Yeah, I'm fine with the numbers, but it would be helpful to not only have an average, but also to be able to ferret out the degree of consensus, so if there's a wide...
Oh, yeah, you can do the standard deviations, you can do the average means, but...
Excellent.
So, I think we should come back and look, and review this in our next meeting, maybe not the third, the organization meeting, but the one after that, and just, again, have a discussion, but...
But meanwhile, if you do have a chance...
Yep.
To look it over and give me some feedback, I can just keep playing with it.
Want to give us a deadline?
Yeah, how about New Year's Day? What, when, after the, what's the next meeting after the organization? 17th?
17th.
That, just don't give it to me, all the 16th. I knew we weren't going to, no, I knew we weren't going to talk about it.
Okay. Fair enough.
We had to...
Fair enough.
Okay?
All right. Action items, 8.01, can I get a motion for approval of the personnel actions as presented this evening? From anybody?
I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Moved in second for approval of the personnel actions as presented, Mrs. Serza?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Olenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 8.02, Fiscal Year 2018 through 2027 Capital Improvement Plan, can I get a motion for approval of the Fiscal Year 2018 to 2027 Capital Improvement Plan?
Mr. Chair?
Got to have a motion, so I can discuss it.
Yeah.
Can I, yeah? Discuss this?
No, you can move it, and then, and then you get seconded, then we discuss it.
I move we discuss it.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item 8.02, FY 2018-2027 Capital Improvement Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Olenby.
So, just my only reticence in this, of course, is coming back to two, two items that were talked about at length regarding the walkway and the lights. So, it's my understanding, after a meeting with Coach Lynn, AD Athletic Director Lynn today at Lafayette, they, they still do not have the lights, so we removed lighting from the CIP, but the removable portable lights are not there. He's, he's borrowing someone else's lights.
I think the lights were actually several years out in the CIP, but we are planning to have the mobile lights by the end of this year.
Okay, so by the end of this year, they'll have lights?
Absolutely. We've actually been looking at some of the options and the source of the funding as well.
Okay, that's great. And then, with regard to the walkway, just, just want to make sure that we don't let Lafayette down, and that we will revisit busing, so we don't know if busing will work, because we haven't had an opportunity to bus students, because there's no need to do that with, with winter sports.
Ms. Olenby, we're hoping to keep a very close eye on the busing schedules in the spring and assess and determine if it's working well, and we'll bring you some feedback on that when it happens.
And then, just one additional question, because I know that there are community advocates and Lafayette advocates who are continuing to look at ways to build a walkway, so if there is a plan that's presented to the school board that can be carried out economically by the community or by advocates, is that something that we would, the division would consider, or because we've said, no, we can't use the walkway, are we never going to use that? Are we not going to allow students to go that way ever again?
I think that would be a board decision, Mr. Chair.
Well, I mean, if we, if you can, if we have a safe alternative that meets the needs and code and does all those, does all those things, I mean, it's not, consider it, I don't, I'm just one member of SE, but I mean, I don't think that we, it's necessary evermore if there's some way, I don't know if we own the land, but I mean, it's, I don't know that we're taking the walkway off the table forever.
That's what I wanted to hear, so it's not off the table forever. And I know that we have reached out, because one idea that Ms. Cook presented was, you know, partnering with Parks and Rec and reached out to them, and it's my understanding we've, we've done that, but there hasn't been any real resolution with whether or not Parks and Rec would, would consider cost sharing or, or doing this.
That's correct.
Have to go through the county budget process. Any other comments?
I, I do agree with Mrs. Olenby that it's the worry or the concern that we have taken these two items out, and so there is kind of a trust that we will be doing right by the Lafayette High School athletes, and that we, because they're trusting us, they're trusting us that they will get lights, they're trusting us that we will make sure that they're provided transportation. So, I just want us to go on record as saying we're going to do right by them, and that they can have trust in us, and I would hope that they can.
Yeah, the same, I mean, the same spring sports that Lafayette practices at Warhill, Jamestown practices at Warhill, and the buses, and there is bus transportation provided for them.
But Lafayette didn't have bus transportation heretofore, so, so that's where the trust factor comes in, because we didn't, we walked. Lafayette walked. factor comes in, because we, we didn't, we walked. Lafayette walked. So we haven't had that experience. We don't know if it's going to work. That's the trust factor.
It works at Jamestown, it can work at Lafayette.
I believe we have had transportation before, Mr. Snipes.
Yes, we've provided transportation to Mr. Lynn and the, any fall sports that want to go over to the War Hill Sports Complex whenever they ask, at any point in time.
I think it was by request, and I think what we're moving towards is a more definite schedule based on the needs of the school. So we're not depending on that asking every time, because that obviously didn't work well.
You're correct, Dr. Herron. The fall sports were practicing at Lafayette, so the only time they needed to use the sports complex is when it rained, or they wanted to use those fields, so that's when they requested it. But we have been talking with Mr. Lynn about a more continu- continuous schedule.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to reiterate my statement from the last meeting, that I do support adoption of this plan. I appreciate the division's work on it and the new processes that were implemented. We've reviewed each item in this fiscal year eighteen request, and I believe that each one is justifiable. We're operating in fiscally restrained times, and I believe this document was developed with that in mind. And I think this is a request to meet our very basic needs, so I support it.
Any other comments from board members? Been moved in second for approval of the fiscal year 2018, 2020 seventeen capital improvement plan. Mrs. Serza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ownby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
It takes us to nine point zero one, board members' comments. Are there any comments from board members today? Mrs. Young?
Mr. Kelly, I would like to defer my comments to the, and other members of the board's comments, please.
Ms. Ownby?
I, I'll be brief. I just wanted to share that I had an opportunity with Ms. Cook to visit Stonehouse Elementary School, and wanted to thank Principal White for that opportunity, and was, was wowed by Stonehouse. I had not been there in many years, and was particularly impressed with all the unique art, but was also impressed with, with Ms. White's knowledge of each of her students. And I'm sure she is an example of, of all of our, our faculty and administrators. As each young student walked by, she knew them by name and recognized them, and, and greeted them, and I thought that was, was phenomenal. And just wanted to note too, that I was amazed by the use of space at Stonehouse, which is one of our largest elementary schools, and is, it's more space. And so, the band, the band practices on the stage, they also do, use that space for OT and PT, and the library is used for multiple ways, for multiple things. Every inch of that space is utilized. Was impressed with that. And wanted to thank our student for coming tonight to, to share his passion, and appreciate students' involvement in the process.
Ms. Taylor?
So I just wanted to comment on the very difficult topic tonight that many people came to speak about. Very emotional, very complex, dealing with Mrs. Young's family. Regardless of my feelings or any other board member's feelings, the school board doesn't have the authority to ask Mrs. Young to resign. And that decision lies with Mrs. Young and the Berkeley District. And initially, again, I said it was very emotional, and, you know, just looking in the media and not, just taking things at face value is, is quite frankly a mistake. I know that firsthand. Local media said my husband's name is John. Side note, it is not. So I think, again, you just have to take those things at face value. That's why I said we need more information, and I want to let Ms. Young speak for herself this evening.
I also want to say that this has been a very sad, sad situation, and it's a no-win situation with people feeling strongly, and, and kind of with valid reasons on either side. But along with Mrs. Taylor, we have no jurisdiction over this decision. This is a decision that has to be made by Mrs. Young and the Berkeley District. And since, as a board member, I have no jurisdiction over this, and I have texted Mrs. Young and told her this, I am looking forward to fully working with Mrs. Young in any capacity as school board representative until the time that either of us are no longer serving on the board. But until that time, I will work with her fully and engage as a school board member.
Dr. Beers?
Sure. I believe this board is capable of being a, a great board. I would like to see us get beyond what happened tonight, what we, what's been spoken about tonight, and start to look forward for the students and the staff, the school community.
Ms. Cook?
I wanted to thank all the community members that participated in the public input process regarding the superintendent search. I know everybody's very busy, so taking that time is really important to us, and I, and I just want to personally thank everybody. I'd also like to thank the PTA Council for their reflection ceremony. This community is lucky to have so many parents and children dedicated to the arts, and the artwork was incredible, and the kids were amazing. It was a great evening. I was, on Saturday, very proud to participate in the Slay Bell 5K. Over seven hundred people from the Williamsburg James City County Community were there, despite the cold weather. It was a great day, and it was a wonderful way to spend the Saturday morning. If you've never done it, I strongly recommend it. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a good time. And I hope everybody had a restful Thanksgiving holiday and a wonderful holiday break coming up. I did want to make comments about, about the situation and the comments we heard in public forum today. I, like Dr. Beers, am anxious to move on for the sake of this community, and for staff, and most of all, for students. But I feel like I, I would like to make a statement, and, you know, Mr. Kelly, last month I gave you permission to speak with Mrs. Young on my behalf, when you, representing five members of this board, asked her to step down from this board. That must have been a very difficult conversation for both of you, and I appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate your dedication. Around the same time, I had the occasion to speak directly to Mrs. Young, and I conveyed to her directly my opinion that it's, I believe it's in the best interests of WJCC Public Schools for her to step down immediately. Because I took that position, I feel compelled to publicly explain it. I want to be very clear, very clear, that I do not hold Mrs. Young accountable for her husband's actions. Rather, I support asking Mrs. Young to step aside directly and specifically because of her behavior and her choices as a school board member. I believe she was negligent in her responsibilities to this division, because when her private and public lives intersected, she did not take into account the negative impact her actions would have on this school division. Mrs. Young requested and received money from this division to subsidize her internet access at home. This is a benefit offered to school board members, but it is not automatic. Board members must request it, and it is of note that a minority of members of this board request and receive that public subsidy. But Mrs. Young did take action to receive public dollars to support internet access in her own. And I'm of the opinion, after speaking directly with Mrs. Young about this topic, that she requested this subsidy knowing that her husband had an addiction that had the capacity to exploit children, and that it was possible for him to use the internet to perpetuate that addiction. One of the priorities of WJCC is to provide accountable and trusted leadership. Mrs. Young, by asking taxpayers to subsidize internet access in her home, given the circumstances, violated that priority, in my opinion. Another priority of WJCC is to provide trust and authentic partnerships with families and the broader community. I believe Mrs. Young took actions that put that goal at risk as well. As school board members, we are frequently invited to school-related events as honored guests. Earlier this year, we were invited to the PTA reflection ceremony as members of the school board. The reflection event is one that is by invitation. Unlike, unlike artistic or athletic events for which any person can buy a ticket, to attend this event, one must be invited. Mrs. Young conveyed this invitation to her husband, and on Thursday, January sixth of this year, she had him escort her to Hornsby Middle School to attend the reflection ceremony. Mr. and Mrs. Young took advantage of the reserved seats in the front row. Again, again, I am of the opinion, after speaking with Mrs. Young about this topic, she knew that her husband had an addiction that had the capacity to exploit children. Yet she saw fit to use her position on the school board to bring him to an event that put him in close contact with our students. Mr. Chair, Mrs. Young, my vote was negligent in her responsibility to this division, which is why I gave you my support. I did not take that decision lightly. I had a keen focus on the facts, and I confirmed them directly with Mrs. Young. I would hope that I'm afforded the respect of my opinions and the conclusions that I draw as a result of them, as I respect everyone else's opinion on this that we heard tonight. And Mrs. Young, you are duly elected of this, member of this body, and I will treat you as such for as long as you're in that chair. Thank you.
Mrs. Young?
I, I am going to make a, a statement tonight, but first of all, I just want to thank Mrs. Carter. She holds something very dear to my heart also, which is junior ROTC, which I do believe that is a program that our school should institute, our school system, because I do believe it provides the opportunities for, for many students of all, of all whatever, to, to progress and to develop inner, inner qualities that I think help them throughout their lives. And so I do support that. I've supported that since I came on this board. Tonight, I am going to make a brief statement. I, I do respect what, what Ms. Cook says. I may, I'm going to take issue with it, though. First of all, I've done nothing wrong. I've not been charged. I've cooperated fully with the FBI, the United States Attorney, and the grand jury. I am not complicit, nor do I condone my husband's actions. And as a mother and a retired teacher, I am appalled as you by his deplorable and illegal behavior. I share the outrage. I don't think anybody could be more outraged than my family is right now. I am, but I'm just going to give you a brief history. In 1992, my husband Chuck retired as a naval officer and was hired by a, a firm in Saudi Arabia. That is when we separated. It had nothing to do with child pornography. Later that year, my mother-in-law Anne came to live with me while I completed my second masters at ODU. In 1996, I was hired by the Department of Defense Schools, and my children, mother-in-law, and I moved to Korea. The next year, it became necessary for me to send my teenage son Jared back to the United States to live with his father. And you can imagine what that did to us as a family, to have to remove one of my children. While living there, he observed pornography on his father's computer, but he did not confront him, nor did he tell me. In 2000, I was transferred to Germany. And from 1992 to 2010, I had no contact with my husband other than brief discussions about our children and arranging visits with him. We worked on separate continents, and we lived very separate lives. My mother-in-law continued to live with me throughout that period of time. In 2010, my mother-in-law's health at age eighty-five declined and returned to the United States to receive advanced treatment, and she lived with my husband, her son. In 2012, I retired from DODs at the end of the school year and returned in August to the United States. My husband asked for a reconciliation, and as a woman of faith, I prayed for guidance and wisdom in, in my decision-making. I believed I was doing the right thing and agreed to reconcile, and I did not know anything about his addiction to pornography. At this time, we had been separated for twenty years from two thousand, from 1992 to 2012. And I think you can understand why I probably didn't know. Within, within a month of my return, my husband became very ill. He was diagnosed with diabetes, and his health deteriorated rapidly. He went from walking to using a cane, to a walker, to a wheelchair in just a matter of months. It was probably two months. He lost seventy pounds and was finally diagnosed with diabetic myotrophy, and my mother-in-law's health continued to decline at this time. Their time and mine was filled with doctor's appointments, physical therapy, and hospital stays. Chuck began to regain his strength through physical therapy, but in July 2014, my mother-in-law died. In planning her funeral program, my daughter Beth discovered child pornography on my, on Chuck's computer, but did not tell me. I have never seen Chuck viewing child pornography to this very minute. In 2015, I was asked to run for school board. I was elected in November and was sworn in on the third of December. The week before Christmas, after my children informed me of what Beth had seen, we confronted their father about his addiction. My husband attended, has attended during this past year addiction recovery sessions. And then at the beginning of this year, my family began to look for inpatient treatment. But we discovered they are available in Virginia only for convicted felons, and was something which I will discuss with delegate Bell. When my, not that I don't think they should be convicted, but when my son and one daughter recognized there could be no recourse for treatment, my son reported my husband's activity to the police. I just want to read a statement from my, my son. He sent her something he would be happy to, to have me read, but I'll just read one part. And this is from my son Jared. He said, "This has been difficult for my family, and incredibly difficult for me, as I had to make the tough call to turn my father into the police." There have been times when I've reached extreme lows, knowing where I have placed my father, enforcing him to account for his illegal activities. It pains me to have had to hold my father to account, and doing it, excuse me, doing the right thing is something my mother has taught me. She taught, she didn't teach me how challenging and painful, painful that doing the right thing is. However, she did teach me. It is never the wrong thing to do the right thing. Our house was searched, and only his devices were seized. My devices were not touched by the police, although I would have been happy to give them to him. They declined. He, he was arrested on November seventeenth. Excuse me. Oh, it was not until Chuck's hearing on November twenty-second that my children and I knew the depth and seriousness of my husband's addiction. Not that we think that even one picture is right. But hearing, the extent of it was like being punched repeatedly in the face, and my children will testify to you that they, whatever we thought, we had no idea. But currently, he is in jail, and he will remain incarcerated for, until his trial in, in February. Now, there's four concerns, one of which, this is Cook alluded to. My husband did attend a few school events under my supervision, but only events to which the public had been invited. I did not realize that the, thank you. If I had known now, if I had known then what I know now, to be honest, I don't know what I would have done. But I do not believe that I would have taken him. Like some other board menor, members, I do receive a small stipend, and I can tell you, I spent many, many hours preparing for these meetings. And our home, our home has had internet connectivity for many years. Number three, my school electronic devices are password protected, and my hus, husband has had no access to them, but I will ask that the school board take especially the computer and make sure. Number four, regarding my tenure on this board, there have been concerns that I will be too distracted to serve and advise in the superintendent search. I quote Peggy Bellows from The Virginia Gazette, she's the editor. Quote, "She has been engaged and an enthusiastic member of the school board, and that's just what the community needs to get through this next few years," unquote. I will continue to be engaged. During the preceding weeks, there has been sensational and historical publicity and innuendo and about my husband's issues. I want to thank Dr. Beers for his circumspect and rational position. He has demonstrated the leadership and the steady hand that this board so desperately needs. I've done nothing wrong, and I will continue to serve this board with, with honor and with the dignity I think it deserves. I, I will not resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Young? Mrs. Young, I, I, I can't even imagine what, what you and your family are going through in this difficult time. We come to the end of a long meeting at the end of a long day, a long, long month, which could be also really at the end of a long year. I reflect over the past month. Look at all of the, all of the events and activities we have in my seven-year tenure on the board. I had one of my, I would say in my, certainly in my top five great moments as I helped a student get into college, who'd been, had some discipline issues with us, and achieved their dream of getting into school. That was a very, very happy moment for me. We had the reflections, the PTA Council reflection ceremony. I was able to go to the Lafayette State semifinal football game. Unfortunately, they were not successful, but the team fought hard to the end and can be very proud of what they accomplished this year. Attended Peter and the Star Catcher at Jamestown High School, an exceptional play. Those students did a great job. Since we were here last, we've been to the Virginia School Board Association Conference. We've had superintendent search events with the community forums and the, and the, the search team coming to meeting with several members of our community. And last week, I was able to go to a, a career and technical forum at Thomas Nelson Historic Triangle Campus, where they are looking to, to move some CTE offerings up into the Historic Triangle, which our students can take advantage of. So it's, certainly has been a lot going on this, this month, and a lot, a lot of different emotions all, all across the board. You know, in the past month, I've been accused of going too fast. I've been accused of going too slow. Rarely do you come across where there's full agreement as to actions and direction to be taken, especially in a situation as difficult as this one, with which there is no playbook. I have done what I think is the best thing that I, that I thought was to be done. I've done, I've done what I thought was the right thing to do throughout this, throughout this past year. That's the way I approached the leadership of the school board. There might be a couple of things which I wish I had done differently, but, but at the end of the day, I have no regrets. I've done the best that I can and the best that I know how. With that, our next meeting is January 3rd, 6 o'clock, at City Council here in the Striker Center for our organizational meeting. Mrs. Serza, I think we know what our, our agenda's going to be for that meeting. And for the last time, we're adjourned.